This conference will now be recorded.
All right. What is it, 5:02 PM? And we'll call the Order of the Monterey Select Board on February 18th. We have all three members present here in Town Hall. And we welcome Amanda. Thank you for joining us.
Hi.
Amanda's gonna be our new town clerk, which is awesome.
Thank you.
I would like to make note that I do have Chris Andrews' resignation.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I want to make sure that we had that before we hired someone new. So in Monterey, by bylaw, it's a three-year appointment.
Okay.
So that's what we do no matter what. That's what we have to do. Are there any questions?
I think she had a good interview. Welcome aboard.
Yeah. We're excited. Chris did a great job and we're very sad about his circumstances, both for his family and within town. So big shoes to fill, but we've heard, we should be confident that you'll be able to fill them in. He really stepped up and got all this training and we backed him on it and we'll back you too.
Thank you, I appreciate that, I'm very excited.
All right, well, I would move that we appoint Amanda Levinworth as the town clerk for a three-year appointment.
I second the motion.
Any other discussion? Call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And then yes, so that's unanimous.
Easy enough.
Wonderful.
I will be in touch about setting up for payroll.
That sounds great.
Oops, where's the new town clerk?
The town moderator.
Okay. I knew you know the answer to that question.
So we have to put you in touch with the town moderator.
Okay.
Get you sworn in. At least it's my understanding. Right now, what we have the position budgeted for is 15 hours per week. And then 100, we have an extra 100 hours built into the year. So in an election have a year like we just had, a lot of that might be elections. But, you know, you can get a feel for it, don't get overwhelmed by that extra 100 hours. But as you get into it, you can plan that out. And we also talked to Chris about, there's always back organization of old files and that might be something that, you know, we have some hours available for extra projects. For, for things like that.
And as you probably have heard through problems in the past, there may be some things that we're really supposed to have but haven't been tipped up. And I think Chris made a lot of progress on that, but you may find that there are some projects that have not yet been completed because there wasn't time.
Okay.
Especially last year was such a heavy election year.
She was tough for most of all times.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think you probably already talked about the interview committee with this, but and I think Susan mentioned it briefly, but we're more than happy to pay for trainings and classes and conferences and whatever.
Okay.
Town clerk, so we had Chris going to
Went to two different?
A couple of different, like I think MMA did it as a town clerk.
He was coming out.
The next one's in June.
Then one up in New Hampshire, something on a New Hampshire.
This was like a regional one or any way with one.
Yeah, yeah, he's going to the state one, saying the regional.
That's right, okay.
So if you, if you, maybe Doug knows too, but if you look ahead at the calendar and want to set aside those dates, that could also be some of the 100 extra hours, depending on if it falls on dates you remember.
Okay, yeah, and then the next one's in June, the fourth of May or something like that.
Yeah.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
And exciting to have a local who's committed to, you know, town service, it's cool.
Yeah, I'm excited, it's been a really fun new adventure learning the town clerk position and I'm excited for it.
Awesome.
Can you stop in tomorrow?
Can't you start soon? Yeah, you know what happened to the CD?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you wanna go to do paperwork?
No, it's okay. Let's see. Combine like an 11?
Yeah.
Is that too late?
No, that was good.
Awesome. We'll talk then.
Perfect.
All right.
Step out, thank you so much, it's nice to meet you on.
Have a good day after.
Have a good day.
All right. Next up is the Lake Garfield dam repair. So we have some man back.
They were pretty thoughtful, I mean, I liked the way they responded to everything. I don't know what to do, the way they responded.
Who sent that response?
This morning at 4:00 or today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is. They have to remove the gate from the dam.
There it is. One thing that I thought was interesting was that not only does this affect the drawdown, but at a certain point, if it leaks enough, we might have a hard time maintaining the water level in the summer. Doesn't really seem like we are there yet because we didn't seem to have any trouble holding the water level this summer. It, he did say it's not considered a risk to public safety at this time.
So that essentially means I'm trying to find, oh, there it is. I assume that means that we can put it off. Just, we may not want to put it off indefinitely. I mean, I think it's gotta be on the capital, maybe we put it on the capital project?
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea and figure out a lot of full clarity in the next six years for me.
I did this.
Wait, wait till May 8th and do it.
Yeah, Dennis.
Detailed scope and budget, is that available?
So
To the Lake Garfield work.
The conceptual cost range, as I understand it, is 55,000 to 220,000. And I don't think that that includes the actual GZA engineering part of it, which is 31,500.
So we're talking like 86 to 250.
They don't really know what they're getting into?
Oh, I totally misread that.
Yeah, you thought that 55 to 220 was inclusive?
Well, I don't know if it is or not.
It's, yeah, well, you say actual construction cost?
Yeah.
And he says conceptual level cost range provided the inspector evaluation report provided in that was 55 to 220. So I'm gonna assume that that's not inclusive up there.
So the previous, the previous quote that they give us include this plus the actuator and all?
Yeah, the automation.
But that was just their costs?
Yes.
That was, yes.
So would, even if we included that, I mean, would
Do we want to include the actuator?
Do we want to include the actuator in that too, if those are the costs?
I think no, I mean, I, I think the future of the drawdown is too uncertain to make an investment like that. And there's a good percentage chance that in a few years, we're either doing a six-foot drawdown, which requires no finicking, or we're doing no drawdown. And if we end up at either of those scenarios,
We don't need it.
We're wasting a whole automated system. So maybe it's only 5% chance we end up at a six-foot drawdown and 10% chance we end up with zero, but it's a 50% chance that was a totally wasted time. Time. If we wait a couple of years, you know, I don't know that we'll ever have complete clarity on what the drawdown looks like forever going forward unless we get that permanent permit.
Who will, how will we get any clarity provided? By applying for additional permissions to drawdown?
So one of the things that happened with the drawdown this year was we had to do an entire new permit.
Right.
Because the last one that we were doing extensions on, the town wasn't always doing all the adequate reporting and all the adequate data collection and wasn't even really following all the conditions. So we had to do a new one. And we went, I believe that it was a strategic decision to go for a three-foot drawdown because that's what we thought we could get.
But that's my reckoning.
That's not really what anyone's necessarily wants.
Wants.
People, I think that there's stuff at the state level with DEP or their or the other bureaucratic agencies where they're really pushing for no drawdowns. And I think Mike Germaine and some of the Mill Foil and Lake Health people in Lake Garfield really want the six-foot. So that's why I'm saying maybe one of those two forces prevails. And we end up in a situation where an actuator is only gonna be helpful if we're doing it in between.
Right.
And it's a lot of money and it's electricity and it's an engineer thing and something that's gonna break. And then you replace. So it just seems like a lot of work to do when we're kind of seem like we're in limbo on the drawdown.
And it sounds like, I mean, my impression from what he wrote was that it doesn't seem real likely that we're in danger of imminent failure.
No, we have time to plan.
Yeah.
I was just wondering, yeah, I know you mentioned about they're not sure, meaning GZA is not sure about the scope at this point? Is that accurate to say?
I think at the end of the day, from what he wrote, there's no way for them to be certain until there's a diver down there looking at the thing. And I, it sounded like they need to have it assessed by taking it out.
Yeah, it sounds like once they get started, then they'll know more of what exactly needs to be done to fix the
Yeah.
I'm trying to find the section where he talks about assessing this state of the thing. That will depend on if the gate needs to be shipped back to the factory for cleaning and refurbishing and or if the gate frame needs to be reattached and sealed to the spillway risers. So there, there's a piece they won't know until they actually pull the thing.
I just wanted to mention also that the town's hazardous mitigation plan needs to be updated before December 14th of this year. And I'm sure that's going to be an issue in that plan.
The hazard mitigation plan for the lake.
Hazard mitigation for the town, which deals with everything, not only flooding, fires, you name it.
What party's responsible for finalizing that plan?
I believe in the past, it's been the police department and public works. Garrett Backhouse was our last, I guess, key person in getting that done. I believe the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission assisted in the update of that plan. That occurs every five years, so in 2020, December 14th, that's when it was updated. So having that detailed information after divers go in would be very valuable to incorporate in the plan.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know when that's gonna happen because it seems like we need to basically commit to doing the project. And then once we start, we'll, we'll know exactly what it entails.
The only way for them to know is to put the divers down. But we're not gonna put the divers down unless we're doing the project.
Yeah, yeah. And what would it cost to have the divers come? Might it tell us how much time we have?
I think it's at least $5,000 or $10,000 dollars just to get divers there.
If it's a one-year problem, a two-year problem, or three?
It's unclear to me from what they wrote whether, if you put, I mean, it sounds like they're, normally they put the divers down to do the job and that includes pulling the thing to have it assessed. Although I don't really quite get if you pull it, you have to do it during drawdown because once you pull it, it's going to draw down. Right? You don't have a, you don't have a gate closed anymore. Would that, is that your understanding?
Same thing would occur with the culvert. You'd have to have like a copper dam involved to hold back flow, so to speak.
Right, while you're doing it, right.
While you're doing the work and you assess it.
Well, if you did that, the water would overflow the
You could bypass.
You could block it and bypass and go through the, through the box itself. You'd have to, yeah, you should probably have to do it before the drawdown. Does he say it was done during the drawdown?
I thought so, give me a second to reread this.
Because there's no way to
So the drawdown can start assumed in the November 1st.
If the town chooses to move forward with the project where a curve itself needs to be or would be best conducted during the summer or fall before significant freezing weather sets in. As described in our proposal, we estimate tasks 1 through 6 to be completed within three to four months.
I think you'd have to almost do it during, it seems like you'd have to do it during the year because you'd have to block off the culvert, the gate itself, so that the water then would flow over the sides of it.
Once the
And not through it.
Once the draw, you do a drawdown and you're limited to a certain speed, the actual work of pulling the gate, cleaning it, replacing the gate seals and wedges could take a week or two, barring any major weather interruption. And that will depend on if the gate needs to be shipped back to the dam.
Well, let's schedule it because we'll know we'll get the most rain we've ever had in a hundred years, because that's how it usually works.
So I don't, I don't know how, there's no way, obviously, we can't do it between now and December. Oh, wait, December, this is only February. But for some reason, I'm thinking December's coming up. It must be the weather. So you're thinking we should try to do it this year and we're trying to figure out how not to spend $220,000 this year?
Well, I'm just, just indicating that the drawdown starts on November 1st.
Right.
So you'd have to do it
Before that.
Before that, you have to get some information to make, you know, a reasonable decision based on the scope before that date.
Well, I think that ultimately what we're talking about is if, if it doesn't appear to be emergent, putting it off a year or two before we've been personally with that.
And I think just to be clear, Dennis, GZA wrote that it's their understanding that it's been an issue for several years. So if it's been broken for several years and we're just now realizing it, it's probably not something that we'll notice this year in any major way.
I can't comment on that.
Yeah. You not think it's been
You can't or you don't want to.
You don't think it's been broken for several years?
No, I don't, I don't think that the past inaction should be, you know, something that this board accepts.
Yeah.
It's just, we're trying to be physically responsible in light of other very, very major costs that are gonna hit us this year and next. And, you know, another big hit is another big hit.
Yeah.
Dennis, remind me, what did your email start with?
Uh, D.
DJ, I tried DL and that didn't work. Got it, I'm just forwarding you the, the broken down budget and that answer so you can bring it yourself.
And I'm just posing these questions and providing information as
No, it's appreciated and the hazardous mitigation thing is an important thing for us to know about and we have to make sure someone's minded the story, so.
It would, we'd be remiss if we didn't address it in that plan.
Is the hazard mitigation plan the one that start, kicked off this culvert? Pro, project through MVP?
No, not through MVP. If we went federal, we would have to have a plan, an active plan.
Yeah. So But did the hazard mitigation plan from five years ago or four years ago identify the culvert as a project that needed to be done?
Yes, I believe it did.
And that's around when we started doing MVP?
Yeah, we actually started that, I believe, in June of 2018 with the planning process.
Yeah. Well, we'll put on, we'll have to put on the capital plan and see if, if it's in the cards this year or if it's or it's something we do next year, I don't think it's gonna get any cheaper.
No. But I also don't think it's gonna go up 20%.
Price of steel's gonna up 25% too. I think costs have gone up 15 to 20% already.
Since we got the email yesterday? Actually, the, the construction estimates were from years ago. I don't know if you caught that, but in the 2023 Phase 1 Inspection Evaluation Report.
Ah, right, 2023, is that right?
Yeah.
So two years, eight and a half.
That'd be hard.
I'm a little confused at how they came to that figure because we're just now finding out about the leak in the dam a couple of months ago. Did you know about the leak in the dam any darkly months ago?
No, before.
No, no one did, no.
Now, I know, what I know is GZA has been retained on a yearly basis for several years to monitor the dam and make recommendations.
We have a dam inspection line every year.
Yes, yeah, I'd have to go back because we got, I think it was early on sometime in '24, after I started, I think there was a dam inspection, something came in about that.
Yeah.
All right, well, we do have to keep moving because we have, we have a bit of an agenda. So we are gonna move on to the next agenda, which is just, which is the culvert right here inside our town.
Yeah.
So Dennis, is my understanding you met with Roger last week?
Yes, yeah, last week, yeah.
And, and did you end up applying to the federal?
Well, it submitted was a expression of, a statement of interest. SOI. And that resulted in a meeting online with three representatives from MEMA, Massachusetts Emergency Management. And they administer the federal funds coming from FEMA, of course, for such projects related to infrastructure for, and flooding coastal and inland. And their response was, you know, if you want to come on in and be a part of the process, you have to get that application in by the 24th of this month.
As in a few days from now?
Yeah, yes, yes. Tuesday. There's some, as we know, there's uncertainty at the federal level with funding.
Yeah.
And agencies have been told to pause their funding until further review takes place. And some of those reviews are focused around the idea, from what I've seen recently, about diminishing consideration for climate change and in its justice, environmental justice, related to environmental justice communities, for example. The only one we have in Berkshire County is up in Pittsfield. So those two considerations may change and the regulations and what is covered going forward, we just don't know. So that was part of the due diligence to see if we could match MVP funding with federal funding.
So do you think it makes sense to put in an application for this grant? What's the name of the grant?
It would be, it would be under MEMA and it would be called a BRIC grant, B-R-I-C.
MEMA is
Building Infrastructure
Emergency Management.
Oh, M-E-M-A, of course, Massachusetts Emergency Management.
Oh, agency.
Agency.
Yeah. So it's building resilient infrastructure communities. Brick.
Yeah.
My recommendation is, is especially considering the short timeline for that application.
Three days, four days?
Part of the application involves being shovel-ready, which we are not, and that's part of the discussion today. So the value of spending that time and money, I think, is, would be better placed toward the MVP side of things.
Okay, so I think that, that makes sense.
Yeah, and that's based upon, I actually looked to see what was approved in the last federal fiscal year for the state of Massachusetts. And one project was approved.
At all?
Dorchester, part of Boston. That was it.
What was the project?
It was a rebuilding of infrastructure due to flooding and other considerations. About 12 million dollars.
So that, so it seems like the MVP and the one stop will be the, the way to go?
I would think so. The idea of taking care of the permitting through the presentation that GZA is providing, which is, I asked them for a detailed scope and cost, which I believe the board has. I have a copy if you
How far short did we fall from finalizing? I mean, I thought we were finalizing the permitting in round two.
Would you like to discuss that now?
No, not really. How far short are we essentially?
Pretty sure.
Wow, okay.
Let's put it this way, $195,000 short.
Okay, that's a good place to go.
I'm gonna make a copy of these. Pass it up there, you'll, I'll be right back. I can tell you very quickly, just to summarize, of the categories of permits that need to be obtained. One has been obtained from the Conservation Commission.
Right.
But that might change. And there is a 404 U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permit. And that involves to some extent historic preservation, consideration. In that particular case, the Stockbridge Munsee community weighed in on that synonym. In other words, they submitted the application to the Army Corps of Engineers and the comment came back from the Stockbridge Munsee community requiring an archaeological study. There is also an indication by the Continental Conservation Commission that the volume of material, being sand, gravel, under the proposed culvert needs to be added to the project that was not done so when the NOI was submitted, apparently.
Meaning we have to include mention of whatever materials we plan to remove in the process.
That's right, so basically if you, if you remove above a certain amount of material, that triggers another project, that, another, excuse me, another permit. And that's called a 401 Water Quality Permit. So there's also the Chapter 91 from the U.S., excuse me, the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. And Chapter 91 is basically tied in with the 401 permit. It's a license that involves the fact that Lake Garfield is a great pond. And consideration has to be given for that. So there's basically six permits or approvals that need to be obtained. And there has been submissions. And about one is is in the process of being finalized, as I mentioned, the Conservation Commission, related to the material taken out under the culvert.
So of the six, one is in process but needs to be finalized and the other five haven't been done.
That's right.
Weren't these in the original scope of work for Phase 2? Not an unreasonable question.
I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
You know what happened?
Because I had understood that Phase 2 was supposed to take us through to make us shovel-ready with permitting completion.
Right. It's not unusual that applications Right. It's not unusual that applications get submitted to various agencies and additional information is required by the agency. So that's not a surprise, especially, for example, the archaeological study that's required to get that first permit from the Army Corps. That, you know, that's something that could happen. But I can tell you that the project was closed by MVP. So MVP was satisfied enough with the submissions, for example, and the scope of work that was performed.
So if MVP was okay with it, who wasn't okay with it? That we have to still get additional?
Those agencies, those approval and permitting agencies. And this is somewhat typical, that permitting does take longer than anticipated.
So what's the next step?
So we've had a conversation with MVP, and that particular scope and cost amounted to approximately a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. That would be acceptable for a grand application in this round of action grants.
For another Phase Two grant?
Let's call it a Phase Two A. I've had a conversation with the Regional Coordinator, and I believe Roger and I had that conversation, perhaps others as well. So that, that would set the town up to apply next year in fiscal year twenty-seven to MVP for construction, getting into construction.
So who was responsible for, or who was responsible for the permitting? Is it GZA or BRPC? Someone else?
Well, you have project administrator, and you have the engineers that provided the scope for the project. So, you know, they work in tandem, and I guess whatever work was done was acceptable to MVP. And it's hard to know what's going to happen after you submit those or approval documents, until you actually get the feedback from the agency. And it's not uncommon to have these types of questions asked by those agencies or required for additional work.
For Phase Two A, is there a match that we need to?
No, there's no local match required.
Okay, so we'll go forward with the MVP, Phase Two A?
And going forward with this means you put forward a grant, and that would involve BRPC doing the management part and GZA doing the engineering part again, or?
Yeah, that's up to the select board.
In the grant, what would we be proposing to do to meet the permitting needs?
The scope that's been proposed.
Right, I just wasn't sure if he was actually doing the work.
It's quite a detailed scope. It's a very good scope, quite frankly, yeah. And my recommendation would, you have a team, you know, let's continue with the team.
So what I said, BRPC and GZA?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I thought it was, but I can't actually find that here.
Yeah.
So I'm not saying it's not in there, it's just I couldn't quickly find it. Engineering, it's all from engineering.
The fact that there's no local match helps.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if I could make a recommendation to maybe sit down and negotiate that price down.
Yeah, who would we be negotiating with?
GZA. Because I don't think that incorporates, unless I'm wrong, it may have incorporated administration in that scope of services. But irrespective of that, I think that's a high number.
What happens if you apply for a grant and you don't use all the monies? Do you just return them? I mean, let's say you applied for a hundred ninety-five thousand, you got a hundred ninety-five thousand, and it ended up costing one seventy?
Yeah. We just don't use the money, it probably goes back into a rolling account somewhere in the state.
Back to the people who granted it, yeah.
And it goes back to other communities, you know. And there are instances when communities, from the beginning, decide not to go for it at all, so the entire grant application money is available.
Well, I think that, is there any opposition to moving forward with applying, reapplying to MVP? Okay, so we'll go ahead, we'll go ahead and do that.
They are in the process of releasing the Notice of Funding Opportunity. Possibly this week, so that, that will be due, I believe, in mid-May, return for the applications.
Bless you, Dennis. Seriously, like, you keeping track of this, you figured it out, and you get it done, and?
Well, I might be a little bit premature, but I'd like to explore the idea of covering that entire amount in a different way. Not with federal funds. There's a maximum of three million dollars that I believe we have for a given project under MVP. But if you go regional, the max goes up to five billion dollars.
Five billion?
Five million.
Oh, okay.
So we have a town adjacent to us that's had some flooding issues, I believe, on Lake Buell. If I'm, if I'm wrong, then it doesn't work, but I, I believe there is some history of flooding either on our side or New Marlboro's side.
Yeah, like five or ten years ago, the Center of Hartsville flooded.
Really?
Yeah, that's why there's those big stones in the, in the middle of it. They had an excavator in the middle of Hartsville.
Oh, really?
And then that's why the bank is eroding down where you, where you cross over it, where the Lake Buell part meets the, the other Concapac. The bank is eroding because now the water goes very fast through the Center of Hartsville.
So if, if maybe a conversation took place between Monterey and New Marlboro about this concept or idea of jointly?
It's a weird question, but I have to ask it. So it would go, we would need, assuming the prices remain the same between now and then, right? We were talking about needing, what, about six hundred, ten? Because it was going about three point six, pardon me? Point eight. So I'm gonna assume it's gonna be at least a million by the time the, you know, the shovels actually hit dirt, which would mean that that project couldn't be more than a million, or we go over the five million.
If they cover the max of five million.
And ours was three point eight, or let's say four million, counting for inflation, then any other project we add on to that can't be a project bigger than a million.
We're not adding a project to it, are we? Are we adding to the project, or we just? There would have to be a benefit for both towns. So the project would have to mitigate what's going on on the New Marlboro side.
But would this project mitigate that?
Oh, that, the permitting side? No, I don't think so.
No, would the culvert mitigate anything to do with Lake Buell? I can't, it would?
I think so. Well, think positive.
All right, I, I do think.
It's an idea.
Sorry, I just had to figure.
We have the Finance Committee coming in twenty minutes.
Yeah.
So I don't want to get too, too far down the rabbit hole, although there, there should be plenty of that done after this meeting.
Yeah.
But for, for now, we're gonna apply to MVP again for the next bit of work, and do you want a board member to be present for the negoti, to see if we could negotiate the price for the GZA down? Or Roger?
Definitely Roger, I'll be there. Maybe Roger and I could do an initial one and then have a board member for the final.
Soon happens.
Soon happens.
All right. Thank you, Dennis.
Thanks for your time. I'm just, I'm just trying to think out of the box in the future, that's all.
Don't think that I'm not supportive, I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
It's complicated.
It is.
And I'm sorry, I may be complicating some of it, but thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Good one, House Letter of Support.
You wrote an amazing letter, Roger, that's a really good letter.
You're welcome.
I don't know if you guys thought it was a good letter. I thought it was a very good letter.
What did you use?
Get out of here. You did, didn't you?
I refuse to answer that.
I can tell just by your grin.
Freaking God. I am.
That's good use of time, man, cut it down.
You know, that's what, that's what it's all about.
I'm a little concerned that it's that good and it fooled me. You know, when the students try and use it, I can usually spot it very easily, but
I tell you.
Maybe not anymore. Good thing I'm out now.
Chad GPT, which I like to call him Chad.
Chad.
Is a very sensitive fellow. He is very sensitive and, you know, he's easy to work with.
You don't get any feedback?
Don't get. Well, you do get some feedback sometimes.
But he's always on time, right?
He's always on time. Yes, he is.
All right. Well, what about Fiber Connect?
We've got two hundred, everything's two hundred thousand dollars tonight.
It basically seems like Fiber Connect is not going to apply for BEP funding, which isn't
surprising.
That surprising. It also seems like getting internet to Porcher River Road is gonna be about two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, possibly higher because of prevailing wage.
I mean, and the BEP project deadline is also very short.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like next week, it's at the end of the month.
So the only, the two ideas that I have moving forward, one is if we can somehow overcome the franchise cable laws.
Call Chad.
And see if Spectrum, I mean, can really do the most cost-efficient thing, which is have Spectrum run wires from where they have existing wires at the town line. I mean, maybe there's someone out there with common sense left.
She's holding her breath. You die, you want me to call nine one one now?
I mean, we're, we're at a place where a quarter of a million dollars for maybe a few customers versus Spectrum just continuing to run their existing wire. It just seems like if push comes to shove.
It's Verizon that wasn't willing to let them do it, though, isn't it?
Spectrum does, is, was unwilling to, I mean, it was break, without any special permit, it would just break franchising laws, and I'm sure they don't want that.
Right, so they're not gonna do it unless we can find a way to get the franchising law.
An exception.
Yeah.
Could you ask them?
The only way to do it is through the signing that letter.
Verizon.
They seem to be the only ones that would be able to run that. But why, oh, because only, because Verizon does internet, not cable, and Charter Spectrum does cable TV, and that's the whole problem.
Good God.
Yep. So however they do it, you know, they're, they're, they would, we would be, we would be signing that letter saying we support them coming into town, sending. But I don't think Verizon is even planning on doing this.
I don't think they are either. I, I don't know why they were even soliciting that. They were so clear.
They had a lot of people signing letters from looks, but the question of executing, actually doing something is a different story. Because they're gonna go to where the money is, you know, and a couple hundred people there, basically.
My understanding, my understanding was the letter was really a letter of support to, to move forward for them to send in technicians, and then determine what would need to happen to run the lines, I guess, at that point in time, whether there would be any value for, for them. Because it was more of a statewide, from, from talking to Kathy, been there, it was a statewide bid, they were, it was a statewide bid they were, they were addressing.
I'm just trying to imagine, like, it's not gonna be that much cheaper for them to run it to those houses.
No, it's not.
They're not gonna do it. They're gonna look at that number and go, nothing.
The only, the only company that really makes sense is Spectrum Charter, and I think if that's all right with everybody, I mean, it's just explored where it don't like to hurt to to kind of present this situation. It's a very, I, I don't think that it's unique across the state where there are town lines where the electricity comes in from one town to another, and it's two different companies. I mean, if we were a Spectrum Charter town, this wouldn't be a problem at all. But because of these cable franchising laws, which none of this is about cable, about getting a couple of people reliable Wi-Fi.
Right, right, right.
You know, we're talking about the difference of a quarter of a million dollars, so maybe the state looks at that and says, and maybe there's some kind of exemption that we could do because Cottonington's house on the corner of Otis and Tieringham and Monterey, they somehow got wired by whoever did Otis. And I don't know what company that was. But they were able to get Wi-Fi, and it's not from Fiber Connect. So I don't know how that happened. Maybe it was Verizon, or maybe it was some other company that doesn't do cable, and so it was.
Does anybody know who does the rest of Otis?
I don't.
Who does what with Otis?
Probably some spectrum?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I think Tieringham did do Spectrum Charter, though.
Yeah.
Which is interesting. So all that being said, I don't think we're applying for the BEP funding for Fiber Connect. We could sign the Verizon letter if we want to, but it doesn't seem like there's a lot of benefit there. And maybe I'll move forward with exploring any special exemption that we might be able to get, just.
Give it a shot.
I mean, I don't have channels like that. Yeah, I mean, I think, or I might call MBI and just say, look, here's the situation. We have a few houses that their electric wires come from another town. You know, I don't know if other towns use Eversource, Sandersfield uses Eversource, Monterey uses National Grid. That was, that is one of the problems down at Crump Road. Yeah. Is the, they talked about that at one point, because the, coming up from Sandersfield, it's Eversource. Yeah. And so that's why they didn't run the electricity through, because we're a National Grid town. But you know what? We asked Eversource, and it wasn't, it was a, it was not a viable option because Eversource didn't want to do it, but it wasn't totally out of the. Right, they, they talked, I talked to Verizon, they came in and we talked about that once, and they said they had actually been in conversations with Eversource to kind of allow Eversource to run up that, up, up that road into National Grid territory, I guess. Yeah, I mean.
I think this is a really good issue for our elected official, that the government saying it's, we cost us two fifty, get three people Wi-Fi. Can you figure out between these providers who it is? Like, that's what they should spend their time doing.
Well, we brought it up to BEP, or we brought it up to MBI.
But MBI isn't elected official. I think it's a constituent issue, that our constituents, because of the way this is gerrymandered or licensed, cannot get this over town to spend a quarter of a million dollars. You don't want the small town spending quarter of a million dollars for this. This is.
It was Spectrum that shut us down, though, the first.
Yeah, but let, but, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to explain the issue to me, to call like Paul Mark or one of our elected, I'll say. I, I think this is the exact type of work they should be doing for us. I don't know, suggestion.
All right.
Do you want to try and tackle a few of the?
Yeah, why don't we get into the personal policies? A bunch of it came here in ten minutes. Gotta start somewhere.
Yeah. I sent them back online, so you guys should have them.
Which one do you want to start with? Better than looking at the, like, could the access used technologies?
That was part of policies one.
What was that, that was part of policies one, right?
Was it access, was that the first one?
That was the first one, it started with access.
Right.
And use of telecommunications and went to compensation.
I don't know, seeing it.
Did you see it?
What's that?
I don't know, would I send it back to you with my comments on to, like, my response to you?
I'm just not seeing it.
Do you wanna see her response?
As long as you can see it somewhere, I'm fine. I'll look, I'll look off the screen.
Okay. Is that not sending?
I got the one.
So I must, must have sent it.
Yeah, but you, sometimes you gotta go up in the menu and say you have.
I'm not, I'm so sorry.
I'm not gonna worry, I'm not gonna worry about it, so we'll start with access and you should help.
I mean, I thought it was good, with choosing good.
Yeah. So, anything else?
No.
And boards committee, the commission to.
And the town administrator.
Right, instead of I T. Okay, so you had email communications to not keep them, not print them out for two years.
Yeah, that was my thought too, I don't think this.
I don't see how that's tenable, is it required, is my question.
I don't think that's the retention.
So, the preservation of public records, if we preserve them digitally, I mean, it's twenty twenty five, as long as we preserve them.
Yeah.
And the idea of printing out every email is insanity.
You can actually, you can, you can actually. Go to this, you can actually go to the state and ask them to delete emails older than seven years old, as long as they aren't act- as long as they aren't connected with an active project.
Right.
So you can actually, they, they'll.
But we're not even doing, we're not doing, we're not doing that, we're preserving endless years of emails, we're just not printing, not putting it in a file cabinet because. I don't know how many file cabinets that would even take.
We can make electronic backups anyway, so.
And we have electronic backups, to some degree.
The only other thing I said, I commented on, cause I agree with you about the general acknowledgement of receipt of all the policies.
Yeah.
I feel like we should have a list, a specific list of the ones they have to actually initial that they read. Whether this one has to be one of those.
Yeah, but you could put somewhere on each page, you put initial up on that, we used to do that, and that did at the bottom of the page, you got.
Yeah, but I, I mean, if we're doing the acknowledgement, it's like a separate page.
Yeah, it is.
And I felt like if we had a, a list down like this one, this one, this one, so they have to initial each one. Instead of initially, they're copied, which we don't get, right?
Well, we could do some of that during the, well, maybe onboarding, we could put those up there for them to look at.
That works too.
We could do that.
My true sense is getting a signed or initial version is really just about covering.
Your butt.
Ourselves, and if people, I mean, if people don't wanna read the policies or data, we cannot force them to do that. But we can say, we, we provided them to you, you signed something saying that you received them.
I guess what I was trying to do was the middle road of pointing them to the ones that we think they have to read. Because we don't want them messing themselves or us up.
Yeah.
Right, and it's, it's a lot of policies, so we can say you have to read the whole thing. But some of those policies, people are not gonna read.
Well, some of them, like, being presence at work or, you know, absenteeism.
Yeah.
Sexual harassment, some are really, people need to know because there's reliability involved or payroll involved. So we could identify those somewhere in onboarding.
So, how do we wanna, do we wanna finalize this, and if so?
Access use of telecommunications, I still have a question.
Yeah.
Appropriate use and acceptable use.
Where are we?
On the first page.
Appropriate use.
You're saying that must be used for town related business only, and then in the second, and then. Partway down the page, you say personally, you should be minimal and must not interfere with work, so the two don't match. Basically saying that you can only use your computer in one for town related business, and then the next one, you're saying. It's okay to look up what the hockey, what the, your kid's hockey schedule is.
I'm trying to find exactly where you're.
So on the first page.
Under, under.
First page, here it says.
It says appropriate use, telecommunications systems and physical technology, computers, printers and.
Town related business only.
Must be reused for town related business only.
Primarily for official town businesses.
Right, and then.
Where's the, is there even a?
And then you, it's got a whole bunch of things that are prohibited, and then after that, it says acceptable use policy.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to work out what, so I, obviously, I did not draft that.
And then it says town computers aren't to be used primarily for.
Right.
Then it says, says, personal use should be minimal and must not interfere, the two don't, the two don't match.
Right, it can't be minimal and forbidden.
Yes.
It's one or the other.
So, I mean, it's, it's more like those somehow. Be mixed together or, like, like.
Okay, so I think the policy should be no personal use, because of course, if you look up your kid's hockey schedule, you know. At some point during an eight hour workday, that's gonna happen.
Right.
But if you open the door to personal businesses allowed, to some degree.
Right, and it, and it does mention it.
Enforced.
It talks about that, and, and other, in other parts, it talks about that.
So I think the official policy should probably just be that town only computers are only for town business.
So ours should be used, not used primarily, but used only for official town business.
Yeah, I think that's a good policy, it's a, otherwise you open the door to.
I, I don't disagree, and, you know, obviously, it's the sort of thing, it doesn't get enforced unless someone does something egregious. But it's gotta be on that, personal use should be minimal, so I, so personal use. If we say only for official, we just leave that next sentence out, right?
Right. It should be town computers are to be used for official town business, take primarily out.
Yeah.
Okay, then delete the second.
Official town business, so the second sentence is gone.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, people's tech, personal technology, done away with having to use the town computer, it's no good, your personal phone is better than anything else. There was a time when people, you didn't have, we didn't have cell towers.
I'm just going through. I'm accepting all yours. Why are you not going away? Okay.
And the, the acknowledgement, oh, that's, so that's a acknowledgement where it's totally separate.
Yeah, I think though, it's, it's basically six, so.
Okay.
I think.
I think that five more to go.
One town, sixty more to go.
Yeah, I was only sticking with the first eight.
He's keeping an eye on the immediate policy, do we go to F M or finance meeting or other, or do we continue on?
Yeah, we just continue on our meeting.
Okay.
You know Jeff's?
He's out of town.
He's out of town.
Alright, Jeff is in here, I forgot about that.
Yeah, he's in New York.
Okay.
We're ready, one year already.
Let's get started.
Alright. So much of this, the personnel.
Sorry, I don't manage.
After like ten. I can't do it.
Did you do management to let me when you?
I do have management to ask me.
It's six oh three and we call the finance, oh, it's six on this computer, we call the finance, oh, six on that, I copied wrong. We call the finance.
Okay, so, we have similar items as last week. Cola, fire department staffing, anything else to do with the budget, I expect. We'll just kind of go in that order, if that works for everybody. With Cola, is it, is there anything more that anyone has to add or any further thoughts from last week?
Two twelve.
Three twelve, sorry, oh, that's not last week, it's the week before, I think it's last week, we had a discussion about.
Yeah.
But I didn't see it on there.
We did talk about. Alright.
I know we, what, we did talk about.
I remember writing it.
Yeah. It's on the twelve, right?
We, I wasn't here in person last week, but I think that was part of it.
Oh, we did, yeah.
We talked about.
I was on the phone, we agreed, we agreed, at three percent, so, if there's no, nothing new on that, we're not, we won't talk.
I thought we were plugging in now.
Fire department staffing.
Okay, somewhere, I think.
Did you guys get the thing I said?
I got, got you, I, I got some thoughts about how we approached this.
Okay, I got one thing I wanted to share with you, that I had a very interesting conversation. With the fire chief of Stockbridge, Vincent, or Foley, about their plan. The bottom line, so they're, like Agama, they're in a slightly different situation, which they have no sleeping quarters. But basically, what they've worked out is a, an agreement with West Stockbridge, some of this you would have heard probably from news, but some of it you won't have. Where there's gonna be a shared cost agreement, sixty forty, Stockbridge, West Stockbridge. However, the building itself will be a Stockbridge building, so that should that agreement ever dissolve, there's no. Nothing hanging over them about who gets what in the building or dividing the resources or whatever, which is, I think, interesting. It will be both fire and EMS, the current plan is that we'll go up to eight full time, really nine. Cause there's a, the ninth one is the chief, who will be a primarily administrative chief, but will cover calls when he's in the building. Which eventually would bring them to two people in the building, they're gonna go to paramedic level service. But in the meantime, till that building is built and they have sleeping quarters, it will be daytime only. I think a maximum of, I think he said the max would be a sixteen hour day, but it, it's likely more twelve hour days.
Stockbridge and Lee.
It's a Stockbridge and West.
The West Stockbridge.
Anticipated, yeah, we do that, but.
I, I got some questions.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm finishing this, they are rolling out the budget part. They already had a budget meeting with the finance committee in West Stockbridge, but the stock control is tonight and he recommended. They know that other people are gonna be looking to them to know how they did it. Um, they did it, by the way, for exactly the same reasons we're doing it, which is they recognize that they would no longer be eligible for mutual aid. Because they won't be able to provide the mutual aid, so it would be, because mutual aid agreements do rely on reciprocal. It's not one to one reciprocal, but you have to respond enough times. And they knew that they were getting to where they were going to be failing that responsibility.
It was West Stockbridge.
Stockbridge.
And Stockbridge was.
Stockbridge, I think that was fundamentally the mover in West Stockbridge catalog, because they're in the same position. Like, all the towns are in the same position, Agama's in the same position, the only difference is, I mean, there's the towns that realize they're in the position. And the towns that are denying them the position, but they're all there.
Those two towns together are about two thousand two hundred people full time working.
Well, if you, I just looked at the population, for West Stockbridge thirteen twenty five, for Stockbridge is.
One.
Not nineteen ninety four, two thousand.
Two thousand, yeah, I knew that they were.
So, and that is, that's not changing them.
It probably includes.
No, it's not.
But I don't.
Oh, no, they have to be. You'll understand why I'm asking that question, same reason you probably are.
Did, did you get any salary kind of history with it?
No, what he told me, they're, we are gonna get it, but what I'd like to do, he really, really said that. We should go talk to the Stockbridge T A. And that he was pretty sure that they're planning to be able to share numbers, but they weren't gonna do that before the joint meeting. The meeting tonight, where it's shared with finance committee, I would like to go with Roger to meet with Michael. Canalis, Tavallis, I can't quite, I don't, can't read my own handwriting, to look at those numbers. The estimate he gave me was that the average employee, right, average, would be somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and twenty five K. Per person inclusive of retirement and health benefits.
All in, so salaries are probably around a hundred.
Which, if you run over nine people, is the same kind of budget we're talking about. Um, they do wanna go to twenty four hour, but they can't do it till they have sleeping facilities, yeah, he said at twelve, twelve to sixteen hours a day will be this. Um, they're, they are trying to stage it in, they current, and, let's see. Cost sharing. So, this year, the first year would be a total of four, so they have two and they go to four. Um, with weird modified shifts.
Four, that would be two thousand twenty six or two thousand twenty five?
Uh, I think probably the same, it's twenty five, the same, wait.
It's still twenty six.
It's still twenty six.
Yeah, six months of.
That's, that's what the budget they're looking at would do, and they have modified ten hour a day shifts.
But does that include ambulance service too?
No, well, they need to, but they'll have to have to, you can't run an ambulance.
Why do they need to?
Than two people, you cannot move a stretcher with one person, darling, you can't do it.
I'm asking the question of why ambulance is always combined with fire, I understand what, how you have to operate ambulance.
Why is ambulance always combined with fire, because it makes sense, because there's a, there isn't a hundred percent overlap of training. But there's a lot of overlap of training, and if you're running both, you, you know, if you run one building with both things. You can do, they, he, they're gonna have.
I understand why, I'm just really asking why Southern Berch, your volunteer isn't combined with, with Great Barrier Fire.
You have to read the history, if you go on, you read the history, run by the hospital, they give it up, it's right there behind the hospital.
Right.
So it gives the explanation.
A lot of places think that mixing the two is good, because you're gonna have a fire E M T person, E M T can.
And, and some of like here.
It's historical.
I understand that, I understand.
Historical and.
You understand why I'm asking down the road, because they were paying double for S V, but we wanna be a good neighbor, so I'm just reading you.
Well, what we wanna do is have both, you understand that, right?
Right, cause then are we still paying Southern volunteer?
Well, no, we only pay if we went to A L S and if we get paramedic service.
I think, you know, I wanna take a time out, but two thousand twenty six, we're gonna have to pay Southern.
Yes, yes, a hundred percent, we are, a hundred percent.
I mean, that needs to be on the budget line, you know, I guess it was Roger or you, Susan got their financials, you look at it. You know, we can't go, you know, out of that seven hundred and five thousand from communities, they get fourteen percent of it from us.
Yeah, I looked at the formulas, the formula is much better than it used to be, it's, it's.
Well, if you look.
It's exactly the same.
That's right, but the thing, it looked a lot worse when we first started here.
I mean, they got Great Barrier, for three hundred and five thousand, but if you also look at the numbers, you know, on the donations are looking to be down.
Yeah.
You know, they got like four hundred thousand, twenty five, and they budgeted three hundred.
I, I think the bottom line is people are giving less, I, I don't think we should be.
They ran a big, this year, they ran a big mailing, you know, for that.
But I think they don't. I know, I think they're a little.
But, you know, I, I, I consider that a bargain, a hundred and five thousand.
I do too, that's what I'm.
That's a bargain, you know.
Doesn't last at one.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, while we're speaking about ambulance, you know, we read the note from New Marlboro. New Marlboro has nobody to stay at the, sleep at the station twenty four hours, you know.
We're the, we're pretty much the only small community that has sleeping quarters.
Right, but Otis also mentioned Beckett, and they also have a joint police chief. You know, they already got a relationship with Beckett.
Important note on that, particular note, the previous, the, the thing they mentioned, Brandy mentioned. It's a little. I'm gonna call it disingenuous, although she may not have meant it that way, because a number of years ago. Sean was talking to Beckett about, they had a different chief that was running the ambulance. And this was a person who was very forward looking, very, a planner, and a good manager. He was a fairly young guy and was in a position to really do something, and within the year, he got, he went to work for the state. Um, because it was a really good job opportunity for him and paid a lot of money, and let's just say, I think the person that replaced him. Is not probably a, the same level of credibility.
Is this for the ambulance service?
Yes, joint operation.
Yeah, but the, the idea of a town meeting in, in Otis is they're gonna vote to take it from the private and move it into.
No, no, this is Beckett.
Beckett?
This is Beckett, the, originally, the idea was that the guy who was running the Beckett service. Was in a position to do, to be. was in a position to do, uh, to be supervising a larger service that would cover a larger area. But that person's no longer there, and that was really contingent on having someone that was in a position to do that and had the credibility and skills to manage that. So I think that when Brandy talks about Otis working something out with Beckett, she's talking about a, a ship that sailed.
That's all new, you think?
Yes.
You know, but. Question is, what do the select board members think, 'cause, you know, you know, and I don't think it's ruled out in Gary's mind.
It maybe isn't, it maybe isn't, but.
But the, the other thing, I just think for informational, when you have like Southern Berkshire ambulance, and I'm not sure what Sean's concerns about it, about Southern Berkshire ambulance, they're fighting the same battles, they all are. But ambulances are very expensive equipment to replace. You start replacing, you know, better to have five towns going into one than three, 'cause you're gonna be talking about a hundred thousand dollars difference in capital. The ambulance, three hundred, you know, Mari said that they got twenty-five thousand dollars budget and capital for equipment. So when we consider this long-term, I think we need to look at what were the capital costs, what are the operating costs should be in that? And we have plenty to this time to look at how the ambulances work.
I'm gonna throw one more consideration in there, it, it isn't, it isn't really an either or, it's a vote.
Meaning?
Meaning, two ambulances in Southern Berkshire cannot service all, no, they cannot. And in fact, there have been multiple instances, just in the last few months, where every ambulance that we have in South County was out.
Yeah, I've heard stories, you know, I go to cardiac rehab, with people like having to wait six and eight hours to get transported to the hospital.
So it isn't an either or. The, the reality is, we're, we're gonna, we need more ambulances than the ambulance we, we have now. And that includes the ones that's under Berkshire and all, and the ones we and all the others. There're just, there aren't either enough, um, EMTs or enough ambulances at this moment, that are functional, on the road. It's just.
But your, you plan, your intent is to continue to go to those meetings where they're talking about emergencies?
I, if nothing else, I need to, I think we need to understand what the regional situation is and what the plan is. And ultimately, I think, um, I don't think I'm wrong, and I think a lot of the people in the building know that, that the, the two services do in some ways need to be combined. The problem is, everybody needs, we need more people to be on the page and to be recognizing the severity of the problem, the nature of the problem, and the fact that we're gonna have to have joint solutions to the problem.
But I, I just, I, I hear what you're saying, but the, the, I guess the bottom line, you're just gonna work on the medical needs for that.
They, that is what they're focused on, although they did agree, Frank, to.
I know they agreed, but this is their initiation, I mean, that, if they go in there, if they're gonna put financial resources to it, for stuff like that, we need to be attuned to it, because it could make a difference, I don't know if the state.
You're absolutely right.
It's who is doing it.
Well, I mean, they, they have a large committee, but.
Focus, it's the focus of that committee is.
Oh, that committee.
Focus on getting money for joint ambulance services.
Yeah, I think the big takeaway for me here, I wanna hear you say, 'cause I just think differently about it too, you know, asking around, is, I've talked about, 'cause my mother's calling me, I get nervous.
You want me to talk more?
Yeah, please, talk to my mother, then you'll be nervous. But I think the big question is like.
Something like a coffee cup, I don't think it's coffee.
Stockbridge and West Stockbridge make a beautiful partnership, right? Who would, if we could craft our ideal partner and say, let's go after that, we don't even have one, 'cause of what you're saying, everybody's head is buried, or would we have Sheffield, what do you think?
Sheffield, no.
No, there's no direct.
If you want somebody's heads buried, they're ready.
Goldenitis to stay focused, so you answer your question, who would be our partner? Okay, Otis would probably be the most, in my opinion, Otis and then New Marlboro. I just don't think there's a real good direct between here and New Marlboro.
Well, just Stockbridge, West Stockbridge, they gotta go to Lennox.
Yeah, much true.
I mean, because what I'm starting to look at is just the numbers and how much people were serving and how much numbers we're putting in. So to come up and say we're fully staffing when these other towns that have more numbers than us are figuring out a way to build up power.
I think we gotta do it incrementally.
Yeah, I'm not trying to.
I'm not, look, I'm all for it, and I think, you know, where we have different, maybe differences, and I think we can resolve it through talking to one another, is that we gotta do it incremental, because things are gonna change, because other people may, like Otis say, okay, their July meeting, then they say, okay, this or this, let's do it, or something like that, I, I, I just think.
I'm not sure what you're saying.
Well, I think it's gotta be. I know, but it's, I think our, our transition to a full-time staff has to be done incrementally. It can't, I don't think we can take the whole bite at one time.
And, and what I'm saying is to benchmark that, what I would look at to determine what that is, is to look at towns that have similar populations or sizes and how they're staffing up and making.
Yeah, but I mean, when I hear West Stockbridge and Stockbridge doing it, and they're gonna have a partnership and we're gonna start doing it, then you start talking to them, how do we train them? 'Cause instead of ours, you know, can, there could be some training coordination.
Right, but I'm saying.
Can, you know, and then to.
For Frank, go back a step, Monterey with a thousand people, to go up to nine people, when Stockbridge and West Stockbridge together have three thousand three one nine, have to go through Lennox, are having four to six people.
No, year one, it will be nine people.
But not overnight.
But we're not talking about going overnight.
We're not talking about us, we're talking about them.
We're not talking about going overnight, and they're not talking overnight.
That's what you said, they're talking about six people, not nine.
They're talking about a final staff of nine. They have two full-time already, they're talking about going this year to two more, that would be four.
That's my point, that's my point, they're going to four this year.
Nine is still the goal.
I agree, but I'm saying, let's break it down and look at benchmarking against the other towns, I'm making the right progress.
Well, I'm also gonna say that.
So that would be four.
So I'm not sure, I haven't yet managed to talk to either the town administrator, no one's calling me back from Antrim, I don't know why. Um, yeah, whatever, so. Lee is the only other town, and obviously they're bigger, and they've had this in place a while, it isn't new, right? They have the joint fire EMS, they have a staff of nine, they have sleeping quarters. Right, so you had Stock, Lee, but they've been in place for several years.
And they're rebuilding their whole thing.
They're building a whole new facility, but they already had some sleeping facilities, they were already running a joint thing with both, right? And so now you got Stockbridge, West Stockbridge going.
So Lee doesn't have that.
Agamond trying to come online, again, a town, because they're, they don't have enough volunteers, they can't answer calls, but they don't have sleeping quarters. So whatever they work out is going to have to be daytime only, I don't know what it is, because I haven't gotten any details on that yet. They may not even know, they're like, probably like scrambling to figure out how to do it.
I think we need a thermal map of colors of who's ready, not ready.
Yeah, but I think the other question is, you know, when we go into this, I, I know that, you know, sent it out too, is, you know, Sean sent it to two thousand twenty-four numbers, but what time of day, I didn't go back through that spreadsheet, what time of day are they called?
The times of day.
What time of the day is coming, because if you're gonna do it surgically, you wanna know, okay, this is our slowest time.
Yeah, I, I looked at it two years ago when we started this, so I could, you know, I'm good at taking trends through data. But two, the last week, I just eyeballed some of the data she showed me, right? And it is seasonal based on the amount of people here, like.
Which you can hire people.
Which you can hire people, seasonally, the point I'm making, which is my whole point about second.
Yeah, but do you know, where they come in between the lab in the night and six in the morning?
No, it's really, it's five for cave, but there's outliers, and I wouldn't wanna make a bet on that. But I'm happy to run an auto regression or look at it against if there are any timelines.
I think we should have the data in front of us, it may not, we can reject it if it doesn't tell us.
And if you get to me, if you get it to me, I'll run some, you know.
I'm not sure.
I'll run some.
You're talking about the actual time of the calls, I'm, I'm not sure how that.
Well, what I could do, because it always does, the historical data, you know, doesn't predict the future, usually does hold some, really. So if you give it to me, I'll run some calculations, I'll run an auto regression to see if there's any trajectory.
By the way, if there's, if, if you're looking for really problematic data, apparently the, the nine-one-one dispatch call center, it, it's supposedly being taken over by the state, but hasn't yet been taken over by the state. They not, they're not actually on the ground doing it, no, they're just planning to do it. Meanwhile, they've tried various different agencies, and this came out at that meeting last week, have tried to get data from them, and there's, like, the data is really faulty, intermittent, unavailable.
We have our own data.
But I'm just telling you that it's like, whatever data we're gonna get, it's gonna be from our people who get covers, and I'm not.
But I have a.
I can find out if there's time of day.
Question, then, one of them is the ambulances, if we went to Southern Berkshire and said, can you give us your, what the, what times are your calls coming? Because a lot of times when an ambulance called, we send a fire truck out before the ambulance is there.
I'm trying to understand why we're asking so.
So you'll have a sense of when the calls are.
I think we should start with our own data.
I, yeah, because I, I'm not sure how much data we're gonna get in terms of the timing of the call from S V A. They're probably keeping records, but whether they're keeping the records in any form that would be useful or helpful to us for this type of data analysis, I, I wouldn't hazard.
Now, so you're trying to build a budget around when you, unexpected, and when, it's the unexpected that'll kill you.
That's what I'm saying.
Plane crash, like when a plane crashed up on the mountain, at what, two o'clock in the morning?
Or the kid fell in the lake.
Yeah, you can't, and, and the bottom line is, when you need a, a twenty-four seven service is because you can't predict when it's gonna happen. You can say when some high call volumes are. One thing I do know, for example, which I just found out this week, is that if you're looking for the day we have to have coverage, it's Saturday.
Because?
Because it's almost impossible to get anyone to respond with a call volunteer on Saturday morning. No, from here, from our town, we cannot, we will not be able to roll drug with just volunteers on Saturday. Very, very hard, so this is another little, yeah, there's a lot of lingo. There's another little thing I found out, day before yesterday, which is that, um, the current guidelines for a natural structure fire, six fire engines, six, six teams, right? Six crews, I actually call them companies, but to me, that company's like the whole building, so it's a special, six. Six trucks, which means even if a, a town has two trucks, you're still talking a minimum of three towns.
So wait, whose rule is that?
For a structure fire.
Oh, doesn't matter how big the structure.
Presumably, if it's a big structure, you need more than that.
But those are the kind of questions we should ask.
Right, that was for a single family.
That was for a single family house.
Insurance is great, but this, this is why, but we don't have six trucks, that's why you have mutual aid. But that's why everybody needs to be building up.
And just one other question before Frank, so West Stockbridge said they couldn't participate in mutual aid, is Sandersfield? I, I mean, that mean, I would think, what does that mean, you're not participating?
That is a good question, and I think Sandersfield is a big question.
And New Marlboro.
Uh, yeah, I was looking at Sanders, you know, well, they got two fire stations, one, one down on eight, one up on fifty-seven.
One of the things he told me was that.
A little bit here, because we're talking a lot about town, other towns, and I just shit some giggles, I've been doing some analysis of all the D O R reporting by towns, what their expenses are categorized, so I'm doing it the old-fashioned way.
Oh, like, yeah, it works, it works.
Between so many different screens, it's just very. So what I'm, what I'm doing, and I've been analyzing the nine towns in the South County that are closest to them, not including Lee and Stockbridge and the else, including the ones, all the ones in our school district, plus Sandersfield and Otis.
Yeah, school district with Sandersfield, okay.
Not cheering him.
I, I tried, you know, and I can't find much about you, I don't know. Really, I don't, I don't, it shouldn't even be a town.
And it's kind of moot.
I will say that their, their, their tax rate's lower than ours, at, at least in two, at last year, 'cause they haven't reported a tax rate yet. And that's the, the problem with the numbers at the state, is four towns that haven't reported, out of the nine towns I'm analyzing, four towns haven't reported their expenses.
Which four?
Well, uh, Agamond and New Marlboro and Otis are the big ones, but it's interesting, uh, Great Barrington and Monterey are in now. Thank you for getting them, 'cause the Schedule A, which I've talked about before, is great. As a town accountant, it was a challenge to take our books and make them fit the requirement from the state, because the state has uniform accounting, so everybody's gotta jam their numbers in there, and in the process, some of it makes a little, it looks a little funny. For, I just, one example I came up with is public works by mile. So the state shows you mile, the town of Alfred has seventeen point six miles, and their highway department is spending fifty thousand dollars per mile.
And what are we spending?
We're spending seventeen thousand per mile.
But there's a cost.
Great Barrington is spending twenty-one, so the problem would be, you have to get a little more gradual, but, but doing this analysis, you start to see areas ask questions, but a lot of it is how it's reported, so what, when I went, talked to Roger and see if I can have access to Gateway. Because Gateway is a tool that's used to upload your state data, to the, your town data to the state. And if I could have that, I used to have a big spreadsheet, it was just telling me how to put, how to take numbers from the town and put it, where to put it on the state Schedule A. So, I, like, there's some crazy things.
But the mileage thing, though, makes sense.
What did you, it's gonna cost you.
But what did you find?
I'll tell you one thing.
I wouldn't even surprise by.
I was really surprised by the level, I always thought Monterey was a rich town and spent more money than anybody else. I was, it's a bias, I'm sorry to say, I thought we were just as liberal and spending away as possible. So, but, but first thing I did was I took everybody's appropriated budget, then I took.
For twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, yes, yeah, and then I took the levy, okay, which is what the taxpayers have to eat of that budget. Then I took the tax rate, and then we assessed values for the town and the population, all right? All those things, Monterey is consistently number six in all those things, number six in tax rate, from the top to bottom. Lower than Monterey was just, uh, Alfred is four ninety-five, they, they've actually reduced their tax rate. Ours is six forty-four, as a reminder, and, you know, so it's really fascinating to me that Monterey falls really pretty much right in the middle of everybody else, what they're spending. And when you have to think about the assessed values, would you, like, when I was comparing the fire department as compared to the assessed values of their property they're protecting.
Right.
Uh, Great Barrington is spending, as a percentage, point zero three, that's three, in, in finance, we would call it three basis points. A basis point is one one-hundredth of one percent, right? So, okay, Great Barrington is spending three basis points, we're spending four. We're getting cheap, that's cheap, I think. We're, our, our total fire last year was two hundred eighty thousand dollars, that's cheap.
That's because.
What I don't understand is, like Sandersfield, their fire at two hundred ninety-four, they were spending eight percent of their, of point, with basis points. How, how can they, they're spending twice as.
Yeah, but I looked at their, I didn't, where did you get the number, I was on their website today, they, under that.
The state website.
But I think you're on the right, I think you're on the right path, that's what I'm looking at, relative to the population.
We wanna talk about, yeah. So anyway, just wanna, I, I keep working on it, so, you know, I do think that what I like about that is right, most of us are in the same ambulance service, right? So you kind of excludes the people closer to Pittsfield, have a different demographic suburb type things than city and expectation, higher property values, whatever. Sandersfield has, they, they have ambulance service that goes into Win, uh, Winston.
Who does that?
Uh, Sandsfield.
Sandsfield.
Yeah, I was, they, I looked up under their contract, they, they're only paying a very small percentage, I think it's.
I know that with S V A, they're paying on a per-call basis.
Sheffield is paying, you know, the, the way they report.
He didn't give us talk time to you.
I, I've used Gateway before.
But Don can probably set you up with.
I, I can't, you can't, Don, Don, Don's like.
I was all set the glog on, and I, my old password probably still works.
He remembered it on the.
Because, but I think.
Do you have a thirty-one I add on?
Yeah.
Well, it's, it is kinda interesting, and I'm hoping with the other towns will report, it might make a little more sense, 'cause some of the things, like, like, Sheffield does not make sense, they're paying, they're paying, uh, half what we are for fire service. Yeah, but they're, they got a bigger population.
Yeah, but population.
Why would they be paying half?
Yeah, their population's three times Monterey, but they're only spending, we're spending two hundred eighty thousand for fire, they're paying a hundred forty-six. See, I think it's a reporting problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, but some of it, some of it's different, 'cause some of the, like, New Marlboro, I called around, they pay their, like, fire chief fifteen grand a year, and no matter what, he, he, he goes out on a hunter call, so he doesn't get a stipend, okay?
Who's that?
If I didn't like Sandersfield, what's his name?
Oh, that's crazy.
They pay, he's got a flat salary, but then he gets the same as the firefighters, twenty-five.
They pay, he's got a flat salary, but then he gets the same as the firefighters, twenty-five dollars per hour.
So just so you know, guys, well, there's a bunch of fire chiefs that are like, old school, we're done with that. There are a lot of, I mean, the, they are old school, but at the end of the day, the more requirements and the more load on them, there's a, a point at which people, it's the same as this, like, if you're answering a hundred and thirty calls, that's over six and a half work weeks worth of calls, you're not willing to do it for five grand anymore. Right? Maybe once upon a time, when it's fifteen calls a year, that was fine to oversee everything, but now people are kind of waking up and going, hmm.
Well, I, the one thing I've learned, they work a lot of hours, not just between the calls.
And they work a lot of hours.
With the stuff, with the bill and the.
There's just a point at which it becomes untenable, where the burn becomes too high, and they're, you know, and the, the pipeline is not there, so, you know, Sheffield hasn't been. They, they, they are deeply in denial, and I think their bill is gonna come due pretty soon. And when it does, it's gonna be kind of catastrophic, because they're in such denial, they're not doing anything to plan for what's gonna happen when the call comes in from nobody.
Sheffield.
Sheffield, so, yeah, I think, I think, well, what do you think now, that you hear?
Well, what I, original thought is, you gave all these different plans.
I was trying to come up with different possibilities.
I think what we should do is, you have a, besides the labor, you have the fixed cost up there. And then we should just take a spreadsheet and say, the fixed cross, fixed cost across for all the different plans are the same, like repair truck and all that stuff. And then add to what the labor is to that, and then we add what Southern Berkshire ambulance is. And we have this picture of what public safety is gonna be, and then we can say, okay, we, he, he'll be getting up on the budget, and then we can say, okay, we can take from here, give to here, we can go with Plan A, B, C.
So that's, that includes the budget? Oh, you, would you include police, you said public safety?
Well, I think the other thing we have to ask is, the salaries, I was quite surprised by the salaries that were on that sheet that you sent out last week. And I, I, I think you, you know, one of my questions, I mean, the police, look, okay.
I was pissed for the police.
Well, yeah, what, what, what?
Sympathy paid.
Talk to your mother, okay? You know, it's significantly, and the, the way you have the officers, the deputy chief, the captain and the lieutenant, all for making substantial more than the police chief. I, I, I don't know how you do it.
I don't know how you do it either, but I also know that, look, I mean, they're looking up comp salaries for me, but it, I remember that there were at some point. I can't, I went through all my documents, I don't have them. Um, if you go online and look up police chiefs for the state of Massachusetts. But here's the scary part, Frank, those are not high numbers for, for the state, right? If you really think you're gonna pay an EMT less than thirty bucks an hour, it's not gonna happen.
New Marlboro's paying, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's thirty, I don't have enough information, but New Marlboro's paying between twenty and twenty-five.
Yeah, but you want, I, I guarantee you, they're not gonna keep that person very long.
I, I know, but I, I'm, you know, what are the different towns, you know, it'd be interesting.
No, I know, that's why I wanted.
Two, I, I think, you know, getting with Stockbridge and saying what they're paying, and you have a spreadsheet, and you have to have total costs, because the pension plan changes because they're emergency people. Two, is workman comp's gonna be going up, oh, that's not a, that's a cost, it's not a pay, you know, we have to, some of it, we want to do this. And we look at it, because it'd be interesting to talk with Stockbridge and Wes Stockbridge, where are you? How did you get this number? Because we, we could be turning out to be a bidding war for help.
I think.
And we got a little bit, in my opinion, when we had the Department of Highway stuff a few years ago, got a little bit into a bidding war. You know, but, and we gotta deal with, you're gonna have a morale, uh, issue with the two police officers and the police chief, in my opinion. And we need to talk about that, because we could set up the spreadsheet, here it is, okay, what do we need to do? Maybe there's a three-year plan for doing, bringing them in, you know, something we can sit down and talk to them about. But we're gonna, you know, we need to get all the numbers in front of us, what the different plans are gonna cost. We know what Southern Berkshire ambulance, get the pension number.
Here's the thing, I am not willing to try to run numbers for all of those plans. It was never my thought, I'm willing to run numbers for another couple, but I, I seriously, I said to Roger that today, and he looked at me, it's like, we'll never see you again, your head will explode.
I think part of the problem, and what stress magic I brought up last year, this is a new service, a new service to the town. Long-term, we can pretty much identify what it's gonna be. It's not gonna be implemented all in one year, and we're focusing on one year. And that kind of troubles me, because it's gonna confuse everybody, if you don't go in, take the full-in costs and then divide it by years that way to come up with your interim, twenty-six and twenty-seven. I'm just, you know, we're trying to spend a lot of time.
But I would say, I would say we need to present the whole picture, three years it's gonna look like this. You start off incrementally, because it's easier to make a change if you wanna do a change, if you negotiate a deal with Otis or something like that. You say, here's, here's the worst-case scenario in three years, nine full-time people, here's, you know, this is cost, benefit, cost.
Best-case scenario.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna call that a best case.
This is what it's gonna do, but we're gonna start off incremental, because we know that Otis said, you know, okay, we'll talk to you after July, and we should take that opportunity, and like what you're suggesting last week, getting, you know, over, you know, the two and a half percent, we need to bring that up in the meeting, and we need to think about it three years out, not a year out.
That's right.
You know, you want less.
That's what I'm saying, is that you have to keep in your mind what your ultimate cost of assistance is gonna be. Maybe it'll be different year by year till it's fully implemented, but then you're gonna spend a lot of time budgeting hours and this one.
Yeah, but.
We'll do it in October rather than November, and what we just heard.
But I.
Yeah, but, and, and, you know, if you're spending hundreds of thousands of hours, you wanna be careful about how you do it, so, you know.
Well, you're gonna budget it by year, I'm just trying to get to explaining to taxpayers why you're asking for one and a half million dollar budget override. That's, that's where you have to start, and then back into the years for the next year.
You could come up with, you know, five to ten different points while you're doing it.
I would suggest, I, I agree that's where we wanna go, but I would suggest that we start, actually, because I feel like we were all on the page of, oh, we're staffing up to nine, and I know, I'm, I feel we should roll that back this year. So pegged with what some of the other places do, so I think we should start with, what do we think is realistic for this year?
Actually, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask this a different way.
Okay.
Fundamentally. I think first, are, do we believe that where we're headed is a full-time with at least two people in the house at a time? Is that, or, like, really, the nine people is three, right? Because three is, is closer to a staff truck, is that where we're headed?
See, I have a problem with that question, it's like, it's like my cousin Vinny, that's a bullshit question.
No, I think that's, I think that's the fundamental question. We're not thinking.
The task, we're the task at show.
If we're not thinking that our goal, let me finish, dang it. We're not thinking that our ultimate goal is to have twenty-four seven coverage with three people in the house. Then we're on a different table entirely. If that is our ultimate goal, and we're all agreed on that, and now what we're talking, and we're still debating, is that gonna be just fire or fire and ambulance? That's another conversation, but there's also the question, if, if that's not our goal, we need to be clear on what it is. If that is our goal, and we're asking how do we get there, then I think the next question we ask is, what kind of coverage are we willing to accept in the meantime? Are we willing to have only one person in the house and hope a volunteer comes? Are we looking at daytime-only service? Which of the, which of the options are we comfortable with in terms of guaranteeing the service to our residents?
Can I go back to why I think it's a bullshit question, because I think, I think those two questions are good, but I think the variable that we're not talking about is, is their partner? And who is that partner, and how does that change the situation? Is it Otis, is it someone else? It might still mean nine people, and we have to figure it out, but I think if we have a partner and ultimate coverage and that thing, it totally.
But we, we, there is no way at this time, based on the, the responses from New Marlboro, realistically, based on the responses from New Marlboro and Otis, they're not open to conversations about significant agreements for joint services until Otis finalizes its deal with the ambulance and New Marlboro changes its mind, or we have more conversations with that.
That's the variable.
But we don't know that.
I understand.
Yeah, but I, I don't, that, I think, I take your point and questions are very good, I don't think they're bullshit questions, I think they're very legitimate, because you need to define what do you want at the end, and what kind of service are we gonna provide. But the, the numbers are, you know, with Otis, then we need to make a priority, is negotiating with, like, Otis.
Yeah.
Because, you know, you know, they're all gonna get to the point, it's not a question is, it's gonna be a question when? When they gotta, they don't have anybody to call, and two, you know, I'm not quite sure I agree with Sean, you know, we talk about the shared services. You know, if you take a look at the numbers we saw last week, and you divide it among the number of calls, every time the fire truck goes out the door, that's five thousand dollars. Why should we be absorbing that, because you don't invest in your public safety? You know, it's like, it's no longer, we're paying for the service versus volunteers coming.
That's why I have trouble with six, because if you try to go with six full-timers, you're still reliant on there being volunteers, because you're just not gonna have enough people.
Well, the other.
You got only three.
I think it's just a high risk.
Well, I think, I think that's, I think that's their plan, their plan is always to rely on.
Oh, yeah, but even at nine people, they're relying on volunteers. All I'm saying is that I think you're selling the town short, if you think, you're, we're all gonna be willing to take the risk because of the budget, that we just go with six rather than nine. You understand, you start making that argument, you start to sound silly.
Yes.
Because the fact of the matter is, they wanna be served all the time, not just, you know, nothing on Saturday mornings, so don't have your heart attack then.
Yeah, I think, I, I think though it goes back to what Susan was saying, because there, there, there's a concern that, there's a concern that in the daytime, they can't put two people on a truck, and that's, that, that's one of their concerns. And they, and they've said that, they said it hasn't happened, but it's.
It's a question of when.
It's a question of when, and that's why, at least having the two people there, at least gets two people on the truck, and they always feel that they're gonna be using volunteers.
Now, all I'm saying is that.
Why do you take the gamble?
Trend we're going on is that volunteers are getting harder and harder to find. And I think if we're trying to plan something that's totally, that really will only work with volunteers, and requires, and we don't have enough young people willing to be able, able to get away from work or whatever, like we've been fortunate to have for many years.
And that, but that doesn't, that, that doesn't mean nine, that means twelve, that means fifteen.
Yeah.
Nine is, in my mind, nine is the minimum that makes it work, and anything less, is really, you're at risk.
So what do you, three officers and then six?
Six, three officers. Oh, you mean the ultimate is nine? Yeah, yeah. Three officers and six firefighters. And the firefighters would ultimately be EMT or.
What Steve just said, but that's the question, you know, what really struck me about what Susan said is, they're not having anybody sleep there, because nobody wakes to sleep. I mean, but like, so other towns are taking that risk, right, and saying.
They don't have a choice, they don't wanna make it, that's why they're building a, they're.
But they're not hiring nine people this year.
They don't, right, they're not hiring nine.
That's all I'm saying.
They're willing to take the chance.
That's what I, that's all I'm putting in.
How much you love you, I know, I'm saying, sometimes you do the pragmatic thing that you can do. I'm putting out there that it's basically a roulette game.
I agree.
And, uh, so, you know, I think we have to acknowledge, when we make that call, what the risk that, whatever the risk is that we think we're taking, what it is. Right? And that's why I'm clear, like, if we only have one person in the house, we cannot guarantee that truck will roll. Um, yeah, it, it's just a fact.
Yeah, that's, that's, I just feel, if you have to keep in mind, it's a new service. The town will understand if it's a new service and what the goal is, and I think we're, we're parsing it to shortly for one year or two years. We really have to continue a little hard on the, and, and you're gonna need a budget override, folks, there's no way around it, you're not gonna be able to add a hundred three and a half dollars to the budget without an override. So you don't wanna go in for an override each year, you gotta do, want, sell the whole program. Okay, here's the program, here's what it's cost, we're not gonna budget year one, two, it's, it's gonna be phased, but it's incremental, but nonetheless, you have to go from the point of view that you're selling the whole thing, and I have a hard time spending too much time on the granular pieces of whether it's October or November or September, because that's a whole lot of pencil pushing. And I, you know, I don't, that's not really what's gonna bother the taxpayers as much as the whole concept of.
I think what they're saying is that they're concerned about that first chunk being too big. And I'm concerned about it too, but I'm also concerned about whether that truck, if I'm asking for a big chunk of money, I don't wanna say, hey, give me this big chunk of money to set up a new department, but there's a, there's an X percent chance that the truck won't roll, because we didn't put enough into it. That's the thing that makes me anxious.
Yeah, well, that's, we said we didn't get the money, we need this happen.
The override is the capacity to add to your budget for a permanent program that's coming. That doesn't mean you're gonna spend it all next year.
No, but I, it's, to me, there's two, one is the right, the second is, what do we put in place this coming?
Right, but the override, that you have to vote, you can't vote on an override for next year, you can only vote for this year.
No, override is capacity, okay? So you get it, and then you're part of it this year, part of it next year.
So it can roll, I didn't understand that.
And you have capacity, and you're limited.
Even if you're a cash budget, you get, you can vote the capacity three years ahead.
I'm just saying.
You're limited to two and a half percent, unless the town agrees to tax itself at higher than two and a half percent, that is what your override is.
But it's on an annual basis.
No, it's not.
It sets a levy limit, and the levy limit.
Adds to the base of your budget permanently.
Oh, so when you said, so the other overrides that we sent those two adjustments around, those still are in play?
Yeah, it increased your amount of budget that you have each year, permanently.
The, the override.
I didn't realize it was a permanent increase, I did not know that, oh, so, yeah.
This is, that's why you're adding a new program forever, you're not doing it for two or three years, this is a permanent new.
Let's say.
It just, it just makes your bucket a little bit bigger, that you could fill more in.
I think, I mean, I think from what Steve was saying, the analysis, we, we have to bite the bullet this year, whether we, how much we spend this year is another question. But biting the bullet of the override this year, I think is the plan.
I think we're all.
And so we're all in agreement on that.
And I think the partial, partially implementing is fine.
Right.
You gotta grant it all to the voters, because otherwise, year after year, well, we can't go to phase two, because we need more overruns, we don't want.
That's, oh, right, so we all, so let's say that, we all agree, even though, I don't know what justice role is here, because he can't speak to the fire, but a select board there.
He has to speak here on the levy limit, but I think he's got it.
He has to speak on the override, and then I think, no, I'm serious, and then I think the bigger issue, you know, right then, you're saying, like, the pencil pushing, how much each year, but I think we have to really spend some time, and I think I have to go to graphic, really explaining to people what it means, how it ramps up, why it looks this way. I mean, it's gonna, we have to really figure out how to show that, um, in a way that, um, they understand that we're protecting our town for the long term.
One of the reasons why I've been playing with these numbers is that one of the arguments you hear is that other towns don't spend as much as we do.
Well, that, yeah, that's.
And I think this shows that that's not really true, the other towns, we're right in the middle. So other towns are spending more and some less, and some, there might be a reason for it, like, I don't understand why Sheffield is so low on their fire. You know, there's, there's gotta be a reason, it's probably the way they're reporting. And when I, when I did those reports, the state would look at me and say, hey, why is this line more than last year? But they may not be doing that, I don't know.
They might be budgeting something centrally.
Well, things like, so you have ambulance service that's included in fire one place, but it might be included in some.
Right, and then personnel might be in a different budget and then.
And it's not easy to compare towns, but we all have, we all have a population, we all have, uh, a levy limit, we all have, uh, an appropriated budget, and we all have, you know, a total property value for assessed to tax, and so you can start from there, and then you can say, how do you spend all that? And that's what I've been trying to relate it to, what percentage of your ability to the budget? And like, even, like, uh, Great Barrington spends six point three percent last year of their expend, total expenditures, they spent six point three on police, we spent six point nine of our total amount expended. They expended a lot more than we did, right, we already know that, but.
But there's certain.
I think that makes sense, though, those numbers make sense to me, that it's about the same percentage.
Yeah, but there's, others, other towns are like one point three.
That's because they keep a constant.
They don't have police, or they don't, I don't understand how they do it, but. They don't have police or they don't, I don't understand how they do it, but.
They, and the answer is they don't. Like, uh, Stanfield doesn't have police anymore.
The other question.
There are some towns that most of the towns don't do it, regret it, but, alright, so.
In the back of my mind, there's one question I'd like to ask about, uh, Public Works. I know years ago Monterey decided to plow the state highways and not have state plow site. Do we get money for that?
We own, we own the state highways. We, we own, we own, state, uh, towns have the ability to either own the, own a numbered road or have the state maintain it. And Monterey, it's an important town.
So we're paying for it, but I know in Great Barrington.
Wait, but we paid for that privilege, what are you asking?
No, no, no. We, we, we manage and maintain Route twenty-three, all, all the numbered highways in Monterey.
But you don't get any state money to do that.
They're chapter ninety, they're state money.
See, that's why I'm comparing miles.
But you get chapter ninety money anyway.
Like, I'm comparing miles per ton. But Great Barrington's Route seven or Route twenty-three and Route forty-one are plowed by the state.
Yeah.
But that's a good point. We could give that up.
So how do you, it's tricky to compare.
I don't see the state.
Just miles.
And I, I wouldn't want to, because I go look at some, I, you know, Route eight was nice, but once you get into Otis, which is a state town, which is, which is a state road. It's, it's not nearly as good as what I would. It's hard to find to keep twenty-three from being a state road.
I mean, I.
Well, yeah, I do know the story about it.
I think the story that you're all telling, right, is that safety and protection of our citizens has always come first. So the state.
Yeah, but I think there was money involved in the decision. That's what I think, I think it may not have gone away. I mean, I don't know if it has something to do with that chapter ninety money.
The state really explains how they do chapter ninety. They give you all the history, all the years.
So that has to be based on roads, yeah, right.
I don't know, because they've changed their, just, just recently, they've changed their, uh, calculation. And I don't know if in that calculation, they take into, into effect state managed roads, municipality. Look, they, they've changed their calculations to ba, to basically be by road miles. Is how you get your, your chapter ninety money now, but I don't know if that precludes state.
Yeah, I mean, like, they paid us pay for twenty-three through Monterey, even though we ma, we maintain it and solve it and sand it, but the state paid for the.
For the chapter, through chapter ninety.
But you know what I think is very interesting about these conversations is the governor's seasonal designation comes with no money. And I think these kinda conversations are the kinda things that we should say, it should come with money. More roads during, you know, like, I think we should be thinking of the ways that we, the places we can ask that will, and that's a good place.
And that's why I think an analysis like this is good, because every town has to have these same services.
Yeah.
They all have that police, they all have that fire, they all have a library, they all, all have.
They're some of them, yeah.
They're very comfortable as businesses. I used to analyze businesses.
How, how are the, as a business, that's what you got figured? How are the number of residents versus number of the according benefit of part timers calculated? Like, how do we know that? I said that you told me the information that that is which, that it used to always be like fifty-fifty or something?
It's, uh, like sixty-eight percent or something.
Yeah, so how do we know that?
Sixty-eight percent of.
That came, that came from Don Clausen.
So what's, what's the number? So the number is that.
So there's, there's like eight hun, there's like eight hundred households and let's just use sixty-five percent are second homes. I think it's higher than that. Like, I think it's sixty-eight percent, but that's sixty, sixty-five.
And what we're saying is of eight hundred, six, I don't know what sixty-five percent of eight hundred is, but we're also saying that the people who live here full time are smaller households than the people, because like that, that, uh, that thirty-five percent of the eight hundred that you have.
I'm not guaranteed that's the case.
I would guarantee that's the case.
Well, the number is always were that.
Because, I mean, a lot of those, a lot of those smaller homes are on Lake Garfield, Lake Buell, and they have a different valuation. I mean, if you put my home down on Lake Buell, it might be a million dollar home.
No, this isn't valuation. You're saying this is owner.
Thinking about.
Right, so it's not valuation. So when you have owners, right, like, most of the people that live here are more a single family, a small family. When you come on the weekend, we're seeing, like, the calculation was always like, if it was three hundred homes, we're six hundred people. But on the, the second homer, second homeowner's, three hundred home, we're two thousand people. How do we know that?
I don't know the exact number actually of how many people come in, but I guess if you, I guess you can, you could think that there's.
There's town court, there's a census every year.
I just, I just wanna understand what you're.
Does the census include just residents? No, we don't remedy it to all the counters.
Yeah, and I know that our home, our family size is small.
I mean, what is, I was confused what you just said. You thought it was smaller, so even though, you, you think that even though they're two thirds.
Full-time residents, full-time residents, family size is smaller than the sixty-five percent of part timers. I can give a larger family size.
I do too. That's why I think.
So I, what I'm trying to say is that those, that thirty-five of that eighty, which I don't know what that number is, what is that?
It's like two hundred and forty.
Like, two hundred and forty maybe is at top six hundred or seven hundred people versus.
No, it's, it's, it's a thousand fifty.
Oh, so, oh, right, we know how many, we know that. That thousand fifty, that's right. So what is, what is that? Right, according to the state, that two forty is a thousand fifty. What is the balance, the five sixty?
We don't really know that.
We, we think it's something much greater than a thousand fifty or multiple.
You could say four, you could say four people, but it could be anywhere from one person to ten.
Right. But what I'm saying is, I think that number is very important in looking at how we plan for health and safety. Because we have to plan for the maximum and capacity. That's why I'm trying to get that number. Does that make sense?
Probably won't find it.
But it's a big, it's a lot of fluctuation so much.
I, 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 I do speculate, you know, for four people, per household.
Okay, so then even so, it's two thousand to one thousand, but it's more, yeah.
I got thirteen chickens with that.
When am I getting eggs?
And I don't have those.
Not to be a pain in the butt, but at the end of the day, I need some feedback from you guys about where you stand and how to proceed.
Well, I got some.
I, I don't have a huge problem coming up with the, I mean, the numbers I ran are all e, the, I ran for the six person team are easy enough to extend to the final, although everything goes up, right? And clearly, we're looking at the salaries. Eventually, we have to get, I have to get the data. It's being worked on to, to get comparable salaries.
Where did they get their information?
From other towns. But there doesn't, like, with the fire chiefs, it turns out the Association of Mass Fire Chiefs actually has a list of every, these salaries that they'll send out, so Brian can get that easily. It doesn't appear that there's a similar thing that exists for fire chiefs. And part of that's probably because.
So many volunteers.
I, I have an idea.
I'll let you go first.
No, because I think we hit on it before when we talked about showing the town the override. I think we need to, and I don't know if we've ever done this before, and I don't know how problematic this will be, but I think we need to show a low end and a high end of like a, you know, the six person and the nine person staffing. Like, show the three state staffing, and maybe we let the town look on it.
The, the, the other thing I think we need to talk about is, you know, you're working on getting the data, but for the salaries. To me, you're, we're gonna have morale. We may solve one problem and create another. And I'm not sure what the solution is. I don't know, are these drop dead numbers that, you know? I mean, like I said, the, you know, all the officers of the, the fire department are making a lot more than the, the police chief. And the firefighters are making more. I don't know how those salaries compare in real, you know? But that's gotta be looked at.
I, I'm not saying it doesn't, like, that's why I'm, that's why we're gonna look at them. But it, they do seem like they're competitive. As in, about what other people are talking about, right? Cause if you're talking about, if, if Stockbridge is telling me the average comic, the average package is between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five, that means there's some lower and some higher. I'll be, I'll have better numbers for you after I talk to the TA.
Yeah, can you send them out to us once you get them? The way we can think about it.
Assuming they're in a digital.
Well, I know, but I, I mean, one thing's that I've struggled with is the schedule he gave me. It looks like there's a lot of overtime built into it, I guess.
There, there is.
And I, I, well, let me.
Do I, I'm happy to sit down and try to write something out.
Yeah, but I just, when you build stuff depending on people always doing overtime, my history is that fades in eighteen months. They've had enough. You can hire a young guy up there, I'll work all day overtime, he gets married, I'm not gonna work. I mean, I've seen it in all kinds of shit.
The overtime that's, that's built in primarily is that when you pay per diem workers, you have to plan for people that work for you to take overtime shifts, which typically in fire, a lot of times they do. Um, talking to a bunch of other chiefs, basically you get the people that do tons and tons of shifts and the people that do shifts for a while and then quit. Or just don't.
I, I have, I, well, I guess when I have a, struggling with the idea that you're gonna use a lot of overtime, because I think after a while that becomes. And for two is, they're also being well compensated.
The, the problem with that overtime is, isn't that it's a voluntary overtime. It's almost mandatory overtime because of how the scheduling works. Because of that whole, uh, four, forty-eight, ninety-six and the Kelly days. It's the Kelly days and all that that causes a lot of that.
It's the care for the driving away between the salaries.
Yeah, I mean, I'm telling you, you know, you look at this, you know, I, I don't know, can't speak for recently, but Brian, you know, for a while there, one time he was short on help or Jim down, and he worked a lot of shift.
I talked to him about that.
Yeah, no, but he didn't get it. So, I mean, you look at all the things that, you know, and you got all the officers making more money, they're getting overtime, I'm, he's not gonna, I mean, it's a real problem. You know, it could be a fifty, seventy-five thousand dollar problem.
So, I, I'm gonna try to briefly explain the overtime thing. If you run the num, like, if you run the number of hours a day, twenty-four, times three hundred and sixty-five days a week, and you come up with that number, there is a maximum number of hours that someone is allowed to work without being compensated for overtime. According to the FLSA, Federal Labor Standards Act, right?
Fire is different.
Fire is different than police, and police and fire are put different, everybody else. They have their own categories. So, at the end of the day, anytime you ask someone to work in that, work more than that many hours, the only way you can do that is by paying them overtime for those hours. Okay? What you run into is even if, no matter which, this happens, no matter what their shifts run, in every department, this comes up. That's why they have a name for it. It's called Kelly Day. So what happens is with a forty-eight, ninety-six, I worked the numbers out. It took me ridiculous amount of time to understand how this works. It even confuses the firefighters who are in the system. Okay, so it's just complicated. But if you work out forty-eight every six days over the course of the year, you're over the acceptable number of hours by a certain number of hours. I mean, it's two hundred and eighty-eight hours. You would, you would think that's, it's six and a half days. Six and a half twenty-four hour days, which is like a bizarre and peculiar number. So theoretically, you would say, oh, well, that's six days, six twenty-four hour periods you give them off. Except if you look at how the system works, it's a certain number of hours per twenty-eight day period or same percentage for any other. There's no way to work that into a sensible schedule. No one has come up with it, right? Everybody tries, and no one has come up with a way to work that in a schedule in a way that makes sense. Ultimately, what people do is do like a Kelly day, one extra day off a month for twelve Kelly days instead of six and a half Kelly days. Because it's the only way you can make a schedule that doesn't make your administrators commit suicide on day four. Right? So, um, they, they have to shove this extra day in. Now you got two options. Either your, your existing staff that would have that day off works that at overtime, or you hire a per diem from somewhere unknown to work that. And whoever is working that, if they're a per diem, they're getting paid the normal salary, not time and a half. But if they're your own people, you have to account for that being at time and a half. You can ask, you can say in their contract that we need you, because they're a new department, to work six of your Kelly days at overtime. But of course, that's a, that can be a sticky wicked. You might get people that choose not to. They may prefer to work it if it's voluntary and not required. But at the end of the day, you're gonna have to fill all those shifts, just like you have to fill vacation shifts and you have to fill sick time shifts. And you have to get that staff from somewhere. Um, a lot of times it ends up being the permanent staff that are filling extra shifts because those are the people you can find. Just like Brian was the one filling shift after shift because he couldn't find people to come. Also, and this is an important consideration, for the truck to roll at all, you not only need two people, you need someone who is competent to drive and run the pump. That's why you see on there, it always says op, driver, officer, driver. Because typically the people that drive can also run the pump, although it's not a hundred percent true. Um, at the end of the day, if you have two people that can't drive the truck or run the pump, it's two people who won't run the truck. You have to have at least one drive. Which means you also have to have an officer in the house. Except.
I got a question for you. And we, currently, will you, will, you know, where you can still use volunteers? And they get a stipend of twenty, I guess twenty-five bucks, something like that.
Fifty bucks an hour.
Fifty bucks an hour? So there's not gonna be any kind of, uh, issue between the volunteers and what they're bidding paid and when they see what the regular part.
Well, they can take a job.
Yeah, but I, I mean, it's.
At the end of the day, the volunteer is getting more per hour than the state staff.
Just pointing that out.
You're not, you're not getting the gross.
You're, you're not getting the gross, you're not getting the retirement plan, you're not getting the health plan, uh, you know.
And you're not working full time.
Cause there has been, there has been.
And then some. It's more than a full time job, yeah. I, I work more hours than, than a regular full time job.
I mean, essentially, we're paying, we're paying for the privilege of that part time staff. And we're paying better than other firehouses.
Well, I, we're, I think we're paying a competitive rate. I wouldn't say we're paying better. And, and that's the scary part. But that's what I'm saying, because that is the linchpin of the payment plan, right?
Essentially, we've been getting a great deal by exploiting young men for many years.
We've been getting a free ride for a hundred years.
You got it.
A free ride. And now the bill's coming due.
Yeah, yeah.
How do you explain that? I still think the, the key, the elephant in this room, if, if there's a reason for the overtime and blah, 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 is the issue of what these chiefs make versus the police chief.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm dying to see what Wes Stockford says about what it, what they're paying.
And I don't know.
I, I mean, I, you know, I'm gonna point out again that, you know, I don't wanna get into bidding war with people.
No, I don't either.
And we should make a compromise.
But I also know that if we pay substantially less.
I'm not saying pay substantially, but, you know.
We got it. We have to be at least on par, and I, you can't be in the low range. I'm not saying we should be in the high range, but if we're in the low range.
I think there's a difference between the police and the fire department. I'm sorry. The police are not on duty at night, are they?
Of course.
No, they work till ten o'clock.
I put porn duty all night.
No, they're waiting.
We have, we have a dispatch.
You have a dispatch, but they get, either get called or a state trooper.
I just feel like.
I think it's a different.
There's, there's always a voluntary police officer.
There is.
On call, yeah, I know, yeah.
It's almost always Brian.
Yeah, I know, but it's, I know we have one on call. I think they shift into ten or eleven.
And I, I have an issue with that. I've had that conversation with Brian. Like, I don't think it's fair to him. He's like, it's not that big an imposition. I'm like, yeah, it is.
Yeah, but I don't, I mean, I don't know how you get around it.
Well, I don't know either.
You know, it becomes a hundred thousand dollar problem for you.
But I think that our expectation that people are gonna be willing to work that job without being caught, they, the, the generation of people that's willing to work those kind of punishing hours indefinitely is over. It, it hasn't quite ended because we still have some that are, stand up about it and see that as part of the, part of the force. But how many people are around this table would have done it even in the thirties? That fired up, that are just, I don't know. Pardon?
Well, I think you have to kind of remember what the, they're looking at four days off a week in a six day period. You can run a business like that.
I, my uncle did it and my cousin did it.
So, I mean, so I think it appeals to people, and even while you're sitting there in a firehouse, you can answer yourself, oh.
Yeah.
You could be running a business that you may have to answer the call. You may not be actively running the business, but, so I think it appeals for people that can see a way of using those four days to their economic advantage.
Of course, those people are not gonna be getting paid time and a half for extra shifts because they're not gonna be working.
But, well, they may or may not.
They may not, right? It depends what the business is, yeah, right.
I don't know, I, I just.
No, you may be right. And, and I'm, I don't think you're wrong. I'm just, I'm just listening to the younger people that are living in my house.
Yeah.
And feeling like.
Why, what are they saying?
Pay me for my work.
Oh, yeah.
Pay me for my work. I am not giving you my work.
I feel crazy about working two jobs. I mean, I worked three jobs, so.
A lot of them I was tied.
I taught college, I, I had a full-time job in the C F O, and then I also had a little practice going on, on the side.
Right.
And, but I was putting two kids through college, and that's what it worked, but.
Right.
People won't do that. You just don't do that.
Well, I think a lot of people do. I mean, a lot of people work multiple jobs. You have the virtue of shuffle. They go from job to job to make it make work.
And I think you've got a lot of households that are two income households because they can't afford to have one partner in home anymore, and. And I think you've got a lot of households that are two income households because they can't afford to have one partner at home anymore and some of them are working multiple jobs.
And people aren't retiring because they can't afford it, so, you know, and they're looking at their pensions, I mean, I think that's the other elephant in the room, you know, like we do have, I mean, our taxes are going way high and we have a big part of our population on very fixed income.
At the end of the day, though, that population is also the one dialing nine one one. I don't wanna be blunt about it, but there you go.
Right, and to Steve, Steve's point, our taxes aren't going way, way high, our valuations are.
Our valuations are.
So, cause our taxes are relatively low compared to the other places.
It's still low.
Our valuations are what.
When your time costs a thousand, right?
Costs for that, yeah, I'm just saying. I mean, not, and they're not all nine one one men, getting newly retired, they're not all the older people.
Our average age is sixty five point four. What are you telling, they're not all older people, I mean, but sixty four, I'm average. Right, that's.
You're way above that.
By like a little.
But not an age.
I can lay the meeting in front. I don't, I don't know, just give me some guidance here on.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what, what, why can't we just summarize what we've already?
I have.
We're not even talking about whether we should have full time partner, we've all agreed that, I mean, there's a lot of things that we've already mutually agreed to go forward.
We agreed, but I think how do we get to the fully staff?
But here's how I think.
What is incremental?
Here's how.
Simple man, that's where the.
But I think we need, we need to fine tune what it's really costing.
Right, so here's how I would do it, I would agree that we're all looking at the override, so that's the big number. Then I would, with by you, think about not by doing it by timeframe, but by parcel, meaning two people, three people, like, do a step up plan, so we, and then we can look at it and then allocate it how much time and when, so we can look at the whole plan and the different pieces.
I'm willing to do like.
Do you know what I'm saying, that makes sense?
So, but are we looking at, do we, are we choosing daytime coverage versus twenty four seven? Do we wanna commit to one or the other?
I, I think, I think from what I'm, I think what I'm understanding is that um the preferred plan that they have, that you have down here is Plan A, is, is the plan that we're talking about. So figuring out what the dollar value is for that will determine what the override is because that's where we're going to.
Well, it would be for nine, the preferred plan.
Starting back, starting back for the override.
Well, that part is easy.
And then break it down.
Broken down part I'm asking for, if you want to.
I would break it down by high end, I would give the, meaning overnight, the hot, the, if you can do two ranges, it's best. Right, high package, low package, I would do both.
So twenty four seven coverage versus daytime.
Yes, and so we can see the differences in each stage, I think so. What you're doing, you've built a budget that way.
I'm sure at the end of the day, the price tag has probably more to do with the number of staff, which basically means either we have two people in the house or one.
But great, when you lay it out like that, that's exactly what we'll see, that it's not worth sacrificing nighttime because that's not where the big difference is, it's the number of staff. So I think when you lay it out like that, the big plan and then break it down by kind of, you know.
What do we have? I think, I think unfortunately or unfortunately, the plan that they put forward is the plan that we need to look at. Because the plan, the plan that they put forward with the nine and the, the steps they've gone through in the FY twenty six are doing all the things that we've all talked about.
Yeah.
Putting two people on at the certain, certain points of time throughout the course of the year and then adding the, the, the three people of next fiscal year.
But, but I would just break it down that by timeframe, by chunks, so we could then look at the time.
No, I think that's, I think that's what.
But the other thing I would do was sooner rather than later, someone should have a conversation with them and say, let, let us tell you where the finance management's like, we're going. We're looking at the override and now we're looking at the whole package and we're looking at what's doable and how to slice and dice it to operationalize it. It might not be on the timeframe you had, we're looking at how, you know, we wanna have some, as we talked about, meetings with, you know, budget briefing to citizens, get some feedback and really look at the overall, but the overall asking for the larger thing is gonna be on the table, but how we break it down is what we're trying to figure out now.
Which I will tell.
I, I'd like to see the more data on what comparative counts are doing.
Yeah.
On the salaries, very interested in what Wes Stockbridge and Stockbridge is doing. And we need to do it on the police force because, you know, we may solve one problem and have another. I was sitting in Brian's seat and I looked at a guy who was making fifty, sixty percent more than me and say, man, this place ain't for me.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, you know, I, I, it's just, he's not gonna feel, feel it, and I think we need to take a look, you know, take a, I, I don't know, I don't know where the data came from on the, the, the scale of the pay, but it'd be good to see it because we can't explain it. And, but I, I do, you know.
And I really, in what Frank's saying, it's very interesting and I understand it's a function of staffing in the Kelly days, but of those departments that have salaries of that, are they also getting the overtime or are they staffed enough that those chiefs are not getting the overtime? Because in this scenario, you have that, built high salaries plus. You understand what I'm saying, Frank, right?
What did you say you have chief what?
Like, Stockbridge is gonna, has the chief working a forty hour administrator.
And then getting overtime, not getting overtime, that's what I'm talking.
He didn't say a word to me.
But you understand what I'm saying.
Well, I, I. Forty hour week, cause the other ones are not forty hour, it's important to understand that.
That's, it is, and whether they're eligible for overtime or not based on shift, so if.
That's probably why they've made him an administrator.
But I'm saying, so then he's capped at one fifty.
If Brian is not, does, how do, how do the officers of the fire department qualify for overtime and Brian doesn't?
That's what I'm saying, that's why.
And, and it's not only, it's not only the fire chief, but it's also the officers, they're, you know, ten to twenty percent above the scale pay, okay? And that's partly for managing, but then we put overtime on, I, I, I don't know what the laws are.
You have to ask those questions, how, what is that?
Officers never will qual- I don't think that the officers would qualify for exemption. We can, we actually choose whether or not um department heads or whatever are exempt or not exempt, right? We made that call. They have to qualify to be exempted, but we don't have to make them exempt. So for example, we could unexempt Brian's position if we wanted to, I'm not suggesting we do so, I'm saying that choice is ours to make them exempt.
But when you get the scale as high as you are and you're above this, so high above the scale of the others that, you know, what is it, you know, seventy seven versus ninety eight? You know, I, I, I don't know, you know, when you consider them an officer, a salary manager, you know, then they, they become exempt, I, I don't know what the rules are.
It's not a num- it's not, it's whether you're supervising, you have to have a certain number of people you supervise.
You have to, well, usually you have to have the ability to discipline hire and fire.
Right, so that would basically mean it would be just the chief that would be eligible for that?
That's the, wait, F S L A law, and I'm thinking the fire departments have a different rule in terms of exempt and non-exempt.
They probably do and I have to look it up, but it's still gonna be under that and I suspect many of the provisions will be the same. Because basically it's, are you actually a supervisor?
Well, I mean, if you're.
How much control do you have over the rest of the department?
Yeah, but I mean, if you're out on the fire and that guy's been charged, he's telling everybody what to do and if he's in the firehouse, he's, you know, I need you to do maintenance on this or do this and that, so he's taking the lead, he's ta- he's taking, he's managing the workforce.
The fire chief or?
Or the, 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 I would take a deputy chief and the.
Except that that's not the way F L S A works, so like the foreman isn't exempt even though the highway, the chief is.
Yeah, but the, it's a smaller department.
In general, though, I still think a lot of times the, unless it's a really big firm, I don't, I don't think that in most towns you have two people in a department that are considered. I'm guessing. Like most of, a lot of the departments that are full time departments have administrative chiefs and that's true in police too.
Should we be looking at consultants?
For what?
People that know more.
Oh, and consultants sort of how to do this?
Yeah. Well, over in Otis, they used a consultant uh out of uh Franklin or something.
Right, but they're not ready to do it.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're helping, they, they, they helping them, they were helping them, they used a, a guy, a, a company out of
like Foxborough or something like that where the, the, the head of it, the, the guy who was the, the principal for the company was a former fire chief and his second was.
This is the one that helped them deal with the annual.
Yeah.
I, I will say something about that.
Yeah, I don't mind. I, I, yes, I'll take it.
Yeah, I mean, look, that's gonna be, no fifty thousand dollar expense, but here's the point of that, we should see who tells people that help us, that we get some free resources from somewhere or somewhere. No, like not to be our P C, but we have that other thing.
Coming on February thirty.
That we're doing the financial analysis for our time, just for pick on special projects or something.
The state, the state had a, a benchmark.
The office a local.
But I don't.
The D L S.
Here's my point, I think, all said and done, let's just say we get the cap, we get the numbers, we agree on the chunking it down, we still have a major weakness here, I don't wanna say, who's over there?
It's recorded, so it doesn't matter.
We, we have a major weakness in the administration of the department. So if we do, you know, the, the priority is getting, you know, the, you know, how they're gonna manage all this, especially now it's twelve guys or, you know, nine guys, the, the staff keeps growing. Well, nine guys plus volunteers, it could be twenty guys.
Easy one.
You know, so like, I, I, I think if we're gonna get a consultant, they have to really do some mentoring, breaking down the job descriptions of like, it can't just be this thinking, it has to be operationalizing, cause I think that is gonna be a big weakness on.
I think to get us through there, I think it would be good to use the consultant, cause we don't know what we don't know.
Right.
And what we're talking about a lot is, you know, the senior levels of the thing, what, what are the, what are the rules? You know, you know, can, can you have the officers be on salary? I, I, I just don't know what the rules are. And we don't, you know, we need to define that now because you, once it goes, you can't pull it back.
Well, I think probably the most critical thing about the officers, that, that training, they need to know the job inside now.
That's what I'm saying.
To train everybody. Administrative stuff will happen, you know, but.
It won't.
Like just planning and implementing and carrying out all that training, they used to, every Wednesday night, they all used to show up and spend two or three hours.
Well, Dell was doing.
Training now, they, they do.
Dell.
I know, it's, but it's not as. So it's not as group.
Yeah, but it's not as large because he doesn't have the volunteer, I sat out there one night with Dell, he was standing out there for training in the middle of the week during the summer. He goes, you know, I can only get three or four guys up here tonight. You know, it's, it's the lack, it's part of the volunteering, you know?
I don't know, I just felt like the, the, the real, the real key and the real kernel that you need to ensure you have is somebody with the gravitas and experience and the knowledge to lead the training. That's really, that's really the big difference, I think, in the fire department, is that it's the environment that they have to operate in is changing all the time, with chemicals and all this other crazy stuff.
That's what I'm saying, so like that, that ability, that, what we're paying, that there should be an expertise there, we're paying for management, training and, you know, the administrative and that.
Monterey is the one that's been training all the people in this area.
Yeah.
Like, we've even trained some people there in the.
How do they get trained right there? How do most people, how do the chiefs get trained?
They go to training.
They go to training.
Also, Dell went to this fire fighter school and there were five firefighters in Marlboro and Monterey about ten years ago that all went and became certified, but the rest of the staff, the, the triads did not become certified.
That's what I'm saying.
They're not certified now, they're not. When you go to the fire school, it was, seems to me it was a one year program every Saturday.
Beth.
Pretty intensive.
Beth.
And uh, so I don't think they're doing that anymore, I think that nobody, they're not sending people to these schools, we found out that the schools were shutting down. So I, I don't know why, but I know Dell did it and I know there was another guy that used to be here, he shows up every now and then.
So I, I did have a conversation with Beth, our superintendent, Rubio, and she probably, she might have some money for training and she has a guy that does training.
That's E M T training you're talking about, not.
No, it was fire. I think it was.
So where are we?
Clear about fire, I'll call her in.
That's a good question.
Do you know what you need to do, Susan?
Well, I can run up, I'll, I have to rerun the fit, well, first of all, we need to get, we need to get the comparable salaries so we can make a decision on that. I will research what the exemption status is for fire service.
I mean, would Donna be in the housing center or columns?
Columns might have.
Maybe that's who I'm talking about, who we pay to do something.
I don't think it would be column center, although I think they have some.
They might have comparables and stuff, might be able to get that stuff from them.
Someone's gotta do it.
Right, you'd think, but I think it, the police, it's so simple, I don't understand why the fire people don't have to.
That's the most wrong here, so they don't report.
Sean said there's this website that they can recruit from, that simply recruits firefighters, so they must have demographics and pay and stuff like that built into that website.
Well, if, they have the demographics of what people are offering, but it may be a range and not as flat number, it might not be the administrative, right? Yeah, it's probably not the administrative level either. Um, so I can research what's required regarding F L S A exemption for fire service.
Uh, we need a definition of what the pension cost will be.
Right, we need numbers on the pension.
I called them about that, I called them about something else and then asked them about that and they said they can't really, that they, they couldn't give me a number, I guess I'd have to dig into it a little bit more and, cause they don't do, they don't actually do uh updates on what, what our assessment is, except for every two years. So like, it would really hit in January of twenty seven is when, is when they would hit the, with the retirement piece and how much that is.
It's weird that they couldn't even give you a ballpark number per fire team and want to, but it's not that they can, that she's.
I think, I think a lot of take a careful look at what they're doing with my pension.
The, the problem is.
Wait, I wanna raise something really unpopular before we finish.
They don't have problems with how much. That's the last question.
That's one of the issues. Yeah.
That determines, that determines what you.
They have to have a salary before they can tell. I have one more unpopular thing to bring, okay? So we have an overall plan about the, you know, the two, the cap and how to lay out this over the year. Are we going to look at the rest of the tax structure and any changes or any other things that can be done to bring in more revenue or um rebalance something, so, right, because the um, who was it? Uh, your, your wife, what's the name?
Mary?
Yeah.
I have a training.
The planning committee had a lot of questions, they had several different tax questions embedded in their survey. And I guess my question is, do we wanna look at those answers, do we wanna look at, you know, I, I mean, I think just, you know, I agree with Steve, I'm saying, so, oh, we presented to everybody, we wanna show that we've left no stone unturned in thinking about it. So these are the questions we got here, this is why we're doing it this way, these are the other taxes that we raised, because, you know, one of my, I always say, we have such a limited ability to raise revenue here, other than taxes.
Way is to have another tax rate for commercial property, which, no, the nine towns I studied, Sandisfield has has their, their tax rate is nine dollars and they have a fourteen dollar tax rate for businesses, I'm wondering what businesses does Sandisfield even have?
Right, but, but you understand why I'm raising the question, so there are several questions and things that we could take advantage of that might produce money and might not, do we wanna have a discussion with the planning board, do we wanna just look at what those options are? I mean, just in terms of even getting, I, I'm not knowledgeable about it, so maybe somebody else can be, but in looking at the array of options to raise revenue.
I think if, if they existed, we did it, Don, a long time ago.
Some of them are new, they're new.
Yeah, but I think there was the talk on if there were second homes or something.
The second homeowner thing is a new thing that we have.
And there might be additional taxes we can levy on the Airbnb, we can uh.
I think we matched that.
We've matched on it.
In short, the.
Unpositive.
They may not be collecting us all of it, that there's most be collecting, but we did max it.
And then there was a question, there were a few questions in that, in that survey, I thought were interesting.
Okay. Well, they have the C P A, that was one of them.
Yeah, the C P A, you can do the, you can get matched, but you get.
Yeah, secure is gonna cost the taxpayers money, so you're not, you're talking about funding revenue, I'm not talking about spending.
So we're not talking about that, I, I was.
That, that's basically designated that three percent.
Yeah, but you have to match it, so you're not.
But then there's the issue about the way we assess second homeowners on property, that hasn't been increased in years, and I'm not saying they should take.
You can't. Well, the, the only thing, the only thing that you could increase, the, the only thing I think you could increase is.
The tax rate.
No, the only thing, I think, the only thing.
Not saying we should.
And I think you'd have to clarify with Don is the extra assessment that's put on homes above three hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Thirty percent, I think you can raise that, that's what I think. You'd have to ask Don about that though.
Okay.
Cause I had, I was talking about it, I think that's what he would say.
I'm just saying, I don't wanna leave any stone unturned, so is there anything else?
So I think there's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar exemption and anything about that, you can charge us a three percent. I, I really think it has more to do with the low, lower property getting a reduction in their tax rate. That's what the three fifty is. It's not the other way. Where you get more tax money.
It's on, it's on second.
It's on second homeowners. They have a, a personal property in the home.
There's a personal property tax.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay. Personal property is like counting the dishes and the TV sets.
Right. So we set a rate.
Revenue and.
No, it's not.
Nobody wants to go into anybody's house to count it.
But that's not how we did it.
But that's what Don was saying. Don was saying they got rid of that.
They got rid of that.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying.
Right. We agreed, but it's three percent. Why can't it be?
And they just gave a flat fee. They, they are not.
For anything. But, but when that was set, I would venture to say, maybe we did that how many years ago? It was before my time.
Oh, no, it wasn't that long ago.
What, five, six years? More than eight years ago. So, but I would say that over the last few years, we have had several houses which have much more value than three fifty and added to our roll. So they, they might be, I mean, we didn't think the Airbnb cap could ever get more than forty or fifty and bring you what, a hundred? Ninety. Yeah. But I don't know. Even, I'm just saying. Why are you looking at that?
I appreciate that you wanna be thorough, but I think it's a little bit of a red herring.
I don't know what a red herring is, but I bet you know.
It's a false leak, because I don't think, I really don't think there's any legal. That has not been sought by this.
And if you're looking, if you're looking at taxing our second homeowners, it's like seventy percent of people, like we said.
Right.
So, one way or another, we need money from.
Either way, we're taxing them.
Taxes and.
Yeah, I'm just raising it. I mean, I'm.
There's no, it's not like we have a bunch of businesses or there's, it is what it is.
Yeah. And then the other thing is, are we gonna, um, you know, have a conversation with you about a pilot? About.
We're in the middle of it. It's not, it's not going very well. I wouldn't count on them for balancing our budget.
No.
I think it'd be good if we get a token contribution.
I'm looking for a token.
Make a french fry with a hot dog.
Three dollars.
A hundred bucks and a penny around.
As a, as a citizen and not, I guess it's tough for me to act as a citizen and a town administrator. I, I, I look at the fact that sixty-five percent or so of our population is paying a significant amount of our taxes. And so it feels a little disingenuous to all of a sudden continue to keep asking them for more taxes. When, when they're paying, I, I, that's really what I would wanna find out is of the five million dollars that we collect for taxes, what percentage of that five million dollars is paid by the sixty-five percent of the, of the population?
I would be more of it.
It's like eighty percent.
But that, cause the homes are worth more.
But the point is.
Cause they don't have kids in school, so they're not getting any value.
They're not getting any value and that's fire department.
So, 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 so.
Which they need to pay for.
A lot of their actions.
Yeah, but we had to buy another truck for it to go and get up them.
So this whole idea of milking second homeowners for more than we already do is.
I'm just looking.
You're already milking the hell out of them, so I can't.
I'm listening. I've been taking a while for a long time. I'm just trying to look at where.
So, so even, even though they're, they're in the summer, they're gonna have nine months out of the year for us. So. That's just as a citizen.
All right. Just to clarify once again, so I'm working numbers for the whole nine-person team and then I'm doing what? Choking it down.
No, but I, I'm not doing nine plans.
I didn't say.
Okay, do worry.
There's two things you need. You need to know what the next year of our budget.
Thank you.
The other thing you need to know is we gotta tell them now.
Oh, that part I get.
Yeah.
The whole, the whole nine-shaven.
That's what you do.
That part I do. But the next year piece is if I, if you want more than one number for the next year piece, I can do the one they want. I've done that. But if I'm willing to do another one.
Yes.
But I need you to tell me which plan.
So the plan they want is overnight, right? The plan they want is overnight.
Yes.
I would do a non-overnight plan.
Not a, not a, a non-overnight plan meaning daytime, but still two people?
Yes.
It won't cost you any different.
That, but let's see that in black and white. That's the point, right?
But I'm telling you that it won't cost you any different, because a full-time person is a full-time person.
But let's.
Whether they're working twenty-four.
Well, let's see that in black and white. To say, good, then let's go with overnight. It's not more expensive, right?
What matters is how many people.
Okay.
Not what hours they're working.
Is there, is there a way that out of the gate that we could have a, a schedule that would reduce the overtime?
See, the problem, the thing, the thing that I always struggle with overtime is that I, I don't, nobody comes and sits in my job while I'm not there. And that's, that's the difference with fire.
Yeah, someone has.
So, so someone has to be there. So that's why, that's, it, it, I, I struggle the same thing. Right? I was like, how can we deal with overtime? But it's like, oh, yeah, that's right.
It has to have coverage.
If I'm not here, somebody's here. If I, if they meet personally in my job, but I'm not here, I'm just not here. You know, but there's no like Roger two-point-oh sitting in the office. So we were thinking about two-point-one. There's no Chad, there's no Chad sitting in that taking over. But, uh, yeah, and that's a problem.
Well, I, I mean, the, the other way is, you know, it'd be interesting to see what you find out about, you know, the, the top paid scan people, the, the management team.
That part will change the numbers, but at the end of the day.
I know, but I mean, just to me, in the long run, would it be better to have, they have virtually no overtime and you have someone else on the staff that you can cover? You know, you could run the numbers.
And that they personally.
Yeah.
If you look at what the number is for the overtime, it, it doesn't.
But I, I, I'm looking, I don't know. It's, it's different to what I'm used to. You're building a lot of overtime into it. In my, my experience was is.
Susan.
People get tired of it.
Playing with these numbers and looking at them for a while. So you have an intuitive feel.
Twenty-four-seven.
Right.
I think they are, but you know.
What looks in between what they want.
But you get like, okay, I need you to work the weekend.
Take that for your own scenario. Other.
You know, my wife's off.
I do. I do. I just, I do look at.
We ran shifts.
And I might have to look at daytime work to see if the overtime thing is, I have to ask them.
You're sure. You ain't getting it.
Because maybe it does overtime. Um, I know I'm inclined to say full-time is full-time, but the O T part might be a thing. So, um, I mean, personally, I sort of feel like the, the really big thing is whether or not we want twenty-four-seven coverage and whether or not we want to be able to roll a truck no matter what, right? Daytime coverage with a truck no matter what might be different than twenty-four-seven coverage with a truck no matter what. So those are, and those are, those aren't just fiscal decisions. Those are decisions about the service we wanna provide.
Right.
And so that I feel like I need guidance for, because that will change the cost. Like having two people is having two people.
But that's what I'm saying. You have an intuitive feel.
Well, maybe I can run daytime coverage with.
I think you're right. You know, when you're trying to sell it to the voters, you've gotta sell it to them as a single idea and concept. Because if it.
Don't do one thing and then switch. I agree.
Any chance that the voters think there might be other options? Cause I think I heard you say something. I mean, did you say something about letting the voters talk about this or choose something here?
Well, I.
Now, you can't do that. We gotta have, here's the plan.
No, I see. I just, I think, I think you give them.
But you gotta define it from what you see.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, or you can give two plans that you're okay with either and they both work, but it looks like a choice. So that, that works well too.
We don't want that on the floor of the town meeting unless you're planning to.
They don't like to do a lot of time reading material beforehand.
I'm gonna throw out this, that at the end of the day, if, if we believe that we're working for twenty-four, towards twenty-four-seven coverage, I would rather see us do a, a twenty-four-seven coverage relying on volunteers for the next year, even if it means we have to show that having only one person in the house wasn't enough, because there are days we couldn't roll a truck. Because then at least we're establishing a program where we're gonna add staff to and roll through there. I think that's a better plan than going to daytime coverage.
That's what I'm saying. You have an intuitive feel.
I do.
Price better.
But I needed to know that you guys.
Well, you guys, we trust you.
But, you know, it's like, you know a lot more than we know.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
You know, so our question, you know, as we ask questions, you, you, we have a better understanding.
Move the previous question.
Which was?
It's time to vote to move on to the next thing.
That's, well, I, I have one prediction. I bet you there would be more conversation at town meeting about the library budget going up a little bit than about the fire department, which is gonna be slammed up.
I think, I think.
I hear a really.
Conversation is gonna be about the grant writer.
I've seen it.
I, I agree. A hundred percent. I agree.
I think it's gonna be about the grant writer. Just to agree with you.
Over front there.
Put a dollar on the envelope. My favorite grant writer. Yes, please.
I'm voting Beach Monitor.
Now, now I have finally agreed to it because it's health and safety. They help the light stars. I, I rejoice in it. I usually.
I agree, Steve. I've seen it. I've seen people argue for an hour, fifty thousand dollars.
But they can wrap their head around it.
Million dollars in fifteen minutes.
Because they can wrap their heads around it. They can't wrap their head around money. So they can't.
All right.
I think they're.
Do we have anything on the general budget to talk about or?
Uh, the only thing is I, I got definite, uh, I, I don't know what the, what it was actually, but it's, uh, uh, I got an e, an email from Maya from Wendy Terrell, our, our, um, insurance for the network blue is going up twelve point two one percent.
Twelve point what percent?
Two-one. And, uh, um, Delta of the, um, the dental is going up five point three percent.
And the only other thing, don't care that.
But there's not that many people in Delta.
Not that many people.
Yeah.
I mean, this is a mandate. We can't find the.
I'm, I'm meeting with her.
Dental is they pay it. Delta don't.
Yeah, yeah. I, I am meeting with her tomorrow, uh, to just talk about, maybe there's other options, just to kind of see.
Well, isn't there still a state plan? We're, we're not on a state plan. We're on the one that's sort of like group purchasing thing.
Uh, we're on network blue. We're through Blue Cross Blue Shield. We're through Maya, I guess.
Yeah, Maya. But there, the state has a plan that towns can use and it's always, our employees don't like it as that well or whatever. But it's, doesn't, it doesn't hurt to make sure everybody knows that, look, we know the employees like this plan better, but the other plan is the option and we're choosing the more expensive one. And I know it's more.
Now you're giving them a choice?
No, we're not. We're letting them know that.
I'm joking. I'm joking.
The old days when H M O's were starting, employers actually had to offer three different health plans no matter what. It was crazy. But anyway, now you don't have to do that, but by the same token, I do believe the numbers are probably still there, that the plan we're offering is more generous than the state.
Double check. I'll ask her tomorrow.
State plans. I just worth.
Yeah, it's worth saying that we offered.
And it's, it's worth employees knowing that we're sticking with you and we're, we're giving you the better option.
Right. The only things that we had outstanding from last meeting that we talked about were, um, cleaning up the holiday time for part-time staff. And there were some issues about the raises, especially in the community center and the council on aging about what we're gonna do about those. And then there was some issue about liability for accrued vacation, if that was considered. We'll maybe land an out. So I mean, we didn't talk about the, we said we were talking about C O A and M T C, cause they both asked for increases.
We don't.
When. We're trying to stop style against the fire department, for sure.
I mean, I think overall, I did.
Um, so.
Well, we gotta sign a warrant, technically seven days before town meeting.
I have a, I have a schedule.
Crazy. Two weeks. At least two weeks.
I, I have a, I have a whole.
We're talking timeline.
I have a whole timeline now.
It's the signboard signs the warrant, not you.
But I have the dates to help you.
I have the dates too. Town meeting Saturday, March, Saturday, May third, right?
Totally.
So we would really wanna sign the warrant at least by the meeting on the twenty-second, but far preferably the meeting on the fifteenth of April.
Let's just say the fifteenth or April, because let's cut out the middleman.
The fifteenth of April is ideal for signing the town meeting. So a little under two months. And then Frank's taken off, so it doesn't matter.
Right. So it's.
Right after.
A little under two months.
Too.
And. When do we think that we can have an actual overall budget?
I'm gonna start by next, next meeting unless you can do.
Okay.
This is why the aspect, did you guys vote for a snow emergency yet? You know what snow emergency is, right?
Yeah, so about deficit spending?
Yeah, that's the one area of the budget the state allows you to go over.
I don't think.
You cannot exceed your appropriation except, and what you guys have.
So, so, so last year, we, back when you were accounting, probably goes back to, we had two separate accounts. We had, uh, pay.
Yeah.
And we had salt and sand. And last year, what we did, like New Mall brought us and I think other towns did, is we combined it. Because we ran over on the, on the salary.
Yeah.
And so now the whole amount is two.
Seven-five.
It's eighty-five.
Yeah, no, it doesn't matter how many, how, how.
I don't think we're gonna hit it.
You think we're not, you don't think we're gonna go over with this crazy weather that we're gonna have a salt?
You know how we can lower it, right? So forever salt and sand was like one fifty.
Yeah.
And we'd spend seventy thousand, but you can never lower it.
Yeah.
We've, yeah.
No, I agree. I agree with not, I talked to this at the point. We talked about adding overtime with that and said, don't bother because of the snow emergency. But all I'm saying, it looks to me, I like trucks, I've seen running, that we're gonna nail.
We didn't double check, but we haven't.
Like combining the two.
Budget wise, uh, when it was just one line item, they, they haven't even hit eighty percent of the salt.
Yeah, but you have to look at, it's combined. It makes sense. All, all of those.
No, I, I know, but I guess, I guess to Justin's point is that the, the, um, the salt and sand was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The highway overtime was twenty-five thousand dollars. And of that hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they haven't even spent eighty percent of that at any point in the past five years. And so the, the highway overtime budget, what got low.
We went over highway overtime last year.
Yeah.
But now that we've combined them, I don't think, we have a huge buffer because of the salt and sand. But we'll, we'll, it's a good thing keeping eye on, keeping. We did. We declared one last week. Because of that overtime issue and that's why we combined. We said this is.
Right, right. Um, what about, uh, meeting? Are we, you wanna move back?
Tuesday.
So the only thing that you screwed us up a little bit is next week you posted the finance committee for five-thirty.
I can't, uh, because we're meeting at five-thirty. We're meeting half an hour before you.
But we've been meeting an hour before you at five.
Right. So we're meeting at five-thirty in Roger's office. Will Garvin, two, whatever I both did it for.
Wednesday.
For Wednesday. We agree for Wednesday.
I'm out of town Wednesday.
So you wanna, so next week you wanna do.
Were you like in the air on Tuesday?
Tuesday from six o'clock.
So you're not around Tuesday or Wednesday next week?
I'm around Tuesday, but not Wednesday.
So you could meet Tuesday.
I could meet Tuesday.
The twenty-fifth. Is Jeff here? He's not back.
Uh, he's supposed to be back. I think on a weekend, depending on.
The way that we have so many things to talk about, we're meeting and if someone misses a week, you miss a week.
Yeah.
I think we're meeting every week for now until April, until middle of April.
Right. But just so you know, we scheduled five-thirty, cause we were gonna need this finance meeting. They committed you six o'clock. I can't, but they can.
What time? Five o'clock?
We.
Six o'clock.
Probably do a six o'clock joint.
Six, Tuesday.
Tuesday, the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, I posted it for the twenty-sixth.
But we wanna know that Jeff's gonna be there, because.
If you don't have.
Steve, you're welcome to come to our meetings, but if there's no, if there's no one else, then.
There's no quorum. There's no point for that. I don't know if I can. The twenty-fifth.
So you're unavailable next Wednesday and you're unavailable next Tuesday.
I'm not sure, to be honest.
If you're not sure, you can probably get out of it and just kind of.
It's a class, but they canceled, they canceled one week for snow, so I have a week longer, but I don't know if it's next week or the week after.
So you want me at six then?
Well.
They were two seven.
We gotta, if, if Jeff's out of town and Eileen's not around, we don't have a joint meeting.
Right, right. Maybe we can get through them.
I think, I don't think Jeff could do five. There's something, probably.
Right, he can't.
I don't know.
If you, um, I think hopefully, as much as I hate to do it, we'll stick around and at least get a minute or two
Yeah.
Approve, because we're, we're behind.
All right, so I owe you, whether it's the twenty-fifth or the twenty-sixth next week, and the five-thirty posting, if we keep it with, for us to meet a half an hour before you together. And then commit at six, that's why we posted it five-thirty. It wasn't to change your meeting.
But that's next Wednesday.
Right, and I'm gonna let you know if it's Wednesday or Tuesday. Steve can make votes, and I have to find out from, I'll email Jeff and I'll
Ooh, there's a leak.
Where?
I just
There we go, all right. Wow, that's crazy.
It's that rotten banana in there.
Pivotal, girl, pivotal.
Oh my god.
It's a leak.
I think the pit, the pit hole's a little
You can't stay hydrated. I can't stay hydrated in the winter.
Too much salt. They put, they put a little salt.
You gotta get, you gotta get something that's a confidence.
Everything. Look, this one we're doing, look at him. You'd be a good dad, Dustin. Look at him doing it. Isn't that good? You're gonna be a very good daddy. Yeah. I know I would, every book I have
You know where you're a parent, because every time someone is on a table and they go like this, you grab their cup.
Oh, really? Must not be careful.
You just haven't been one in
Yeah, we're just, we could do, uh, yeah.
Their business, and we're gonna go out of your
All right. But, you know, it doesn't feel like it, but we actually made a lot of progress. And, no, we did.
Even if we were
You got maybe a mentor for the boys now. Put a mentor for the boys.
We can just fill in minutes?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I have my personal policies. Eight P M. We started at five P M.
Well, now I agree. Sorry, I
This is so cool. I keep putting on my I mean, if we, if, if we're moving, we're moving, and I, and I have two
We just spill on the shovel with our
Okay, what's the next thing? What's the update?
Uh, well, let's just do minutes, because that one fifteen Yeah. So one fifteen
I, I, I don't think I found it. You gotta do a better job.
Uh, I think about only things I found were in review highway secretary job description. Um, I forget what the word I corrected was, but
It's office, the highway office.
And the office administrator and the next one.
Yeah, I purposely left it because that was the identity, but I, I, I agree, yeah.
Because it was confusing.
It was. I, I didn't know what to do, because we, yeah, no, I, I
Right, and then you got uniformly under the town administrator updates Airbnb.
Yeah.
Because it shows for some and not for others, so, um. Yeah, I, I rather like high office administrators.
Massachusetts.
Yeah, it's legal now.
Too many gummies. All right, well, let's, let's, that was correct. So let's move on to February fourth, maybe we go back.
Okay.
And then, you know, if we have proven this all or got up.
All right. Dude, the first one I had was bottom of page
I think there's only two. There's a typo and then a sentence that you had.
Yep, yep. Just check my sentence and make sure after I edited it five times that it makes sense.
Yes.
Okay. It occurred to me that that might have actually been what happened on twelve, twelve.
It gets very confusing
To, or
When we talk about something multiple weeks in a row, and you go
Which week was it?
Which week did we realize?
So, I'll, I'll leave it to you whether we actually did that last week or the week before it.
We did.
Okay, cool. And it occurs to me that I think when I saw minutes here, I stopped me. I'm gonna be dead. And I forgot that the training was out for that.
Um, I'm just seeing, so you said we have moved forward to the view, so we can just say, um, the town agreed to move forward with the recruiting service? About the app, the, the firefighter?
Yes.
And then combination, it looks like it just needs to be spelled out on that February twelve. Oh yeah, because we did minutes, but then we like had a whole
We did minutes, but then we had the joint meeting afterwards, but I saw minutes, and I was like, okay, I'm done. It's half of the meeting. That's why I didn't, I'm like, where was the call discussion? That's the answer to that question. Um. Okay, so, um, please do check that the the under, unanticipated business with the
Yeah.
EMS utilization. Make sure it makes sense, because I definitely edited that about four times.
Well, then it should be really good if you edit
No, it's sometimes when you do it in fits and starts, you keep re-doing, you make mistakes.
Well, look at how I do it.
That's what I run to.
I know.
Where's that?
Oh, like combination.
Yeah, I got, I caught that.
Okay.
The computer caught it. Yeah, Frank's computer gives me a score, apparently, I saw. An eighty-six percent, a B. Would that tell you why I gotta be?
Well, just, you go on to review.
I don't have that new version of Word.
I don't wanna ask.
That looks fancy. What did I get on that one? Did I get a good score?
I don't know. Says C teacher.
C teacher?
All right, well, I, I, I have the two twelve. And maybe I can touch base with Anna Val and show her how to do it.
Yeah.
Before too long.
Yeah, maybe we talked about it already.
How to do what?
Minutes.
Okay.
Oh god, I just, I finally got used to it, like, we have like really solid minutes now, like we have to bring in a new person, it's hard.
Mine takes a couple months.
I know.
Maybe we'll just do it after the budget and town meeting. Okay, I'm good. All right, well we'll go ahead and move that we approved the January fifteenth, February fourth, and February twelve minutes as amended.
A second.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yay.
Um, couple of quick things. I sent in the recall special act in hard copy to Lee Davis and Paul Mark, and also I emailed them. Let it know, let them know that it was coming their way and gave them digital copies of the documents, and Lee said that she'll talk to Paul Mark. But I do think that if you run into her, uh, the ambulance thing, or anyone runs into either of them anywhere, you should probably mention it to them, because last time it didn't happen, so
Right.
She said she'll talk to Paul Mark. It wasn't her last time, but we need to kind of keep on them. So just as a note, if you can remember, if you see Lee Davis, that we need that recall special act passed. And then, um, do we agree on the rate for the, for the new town clerk? We had advertised position for up to twenty-six pro.
Well, uh, Roger and I talked about it, and being she had the experience, and I, she actually signed the warrant for the meeting at San Francisco on Friday night. You know, we agreed that she would get the same as what, uh, Chris was getting.
Wait, she signed the warrant for meeting and says
There were, yeah, it's
The special town meeting.
Right, what's their special town meeting?
I think it has to do around the school system with other
Oh, yeah, they're changing the assessment methodology, but actually
I think there's a couple different issues.
But there's a unanimous, somewhat, as far as I understand it, kind of agreement between the select boards and the school committee somehow. They worked out a deal, we have a like
Which is impressive.
Well, we'll see if it passes.
Yeah. Gary doesn't speak highly of it.
I think it lowers the rate for San Francisco.
It does. It's a little bit, it's a little bit less.
They're doing, they're changing selectmen to select board.
And, and John Fields, his term is up this thing.
Is he running?
I don't know. But I, his signature wasn't on the warrant.
He was probably tracking. They gotta pay some old bills from Verizon.
Yeah, I saw that.
Who doesn't, right?
Send Jim down there. Hopefully, hopefully, everything's not falling apart down there.
And they're amending the select board town manager by law. I don't think it's anything crazy. It looks like housekeeping.
Yeah. Wonder if they'll have many people
But there she is.
Many people turn up on a cold night. Yeah, I really wanna go out and do this.
I don't see the, I'm missing the warrant article for the, uh, oh, Article one, it's one sentence. To approve the proposed amendments to the F R S D A.
And they don't even have it in line.
Then it's
The column.
It's right here, the document is right here, but I just missed it.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I thought that was the legalese at the beginning.
Right.
Um, so yeah, I, I think twenty, twenty-six.
Yeah.
Which is what Chris had been making. She has some experience as town clerk. And we're finding out that our wages just
I know.
We're keeping competitive.
I wish I knew what to do about it.